Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation, a republic, indivisible, infinite, and just as all.
I was skipping words there. Yeah, pretty much. Been trying to send you back to grace before a long time.
Alright. Motion to seal the minutes.
Move to seal the minutes of a non-public session under, uh, let's see, might adversely, affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board. So definitely.
Motion by Sean, second by Scott to seal the minutes of this evening's non-public session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, uh, let's see, non-public and public meeting minutes from November 20th, 2025 meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the non-public and public minutes from November 20th, 2025 as written.
Second.
Motion by, excuse me, by Don, second by Scott, to affect the, yeah, to affect, to accept, approve the minutes from the November 20th, 2025 meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for 12, 4, 25, consisting of accounts payable manifest Harper's ACH dated 11, 6, 25, accounts payable manifest Harper's ACH dated 11, 20, 25, accounts payable manifest dated 11, 26, 25, accounts payable manifest NHRS ACH dated 12, 1, 25, accounts payable manifest WEX ACH dated 12, 4, 25, accounts payable manifest Harper's ACH dated 12, 4, 25, accounts payable manifest dated 12, 4, 25, payroll payment manifest dated 12, 4, 25, 2026 through 2030 revaluation contract with Comfort, Neder and Perkins, 2026 through 2030 general assessing contract with Comfort, Neder and Perkins, removal of all veterans credit from map lot 114-015, current use application for map lot 218-007-001, 218-007-002, 218-007-003 and 218-007-004.
Here is the reading.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Don, second by Scott to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
It's like you've given up on this subdivision.
What's that?
The current use application to property that had formerly been subdivided into four lots. Looks like you've given up.
He can take it back out.
He can put, he puts it into current use because their containers go under.
She for, uh...
Um, the first document, I know, um, I put equipment first, Ben.
Sure.
So the first document is 3A, the purchase discussion. Ben did a memo about it there.
So we're talking with Russell first?
I don't care, however, however you want to do it. I can kind of hit it broadly as, to me, I had three potential warrant articles. One is the replacement of the SCBA compressor, one's engine two replacement, and one's changing the ambulance SRFMO. So, uh, the discussion that Christine and I had, based on the pricing and based on where the current fire department reserve account sits, is to at least bring the compressor forward tonight. If we wanted to move forward with purchasing it, we could, uh, but at least it has that same discussion if we decide to move forward with a warrant article. Does that make sense?
Sorry.
Okay, fine. So I guess, I think I've, I've brought it up a couple times here and there, not like a real big topic, but, um, the compressor that we have was purchased in roughly 2010. Um, it was on an AFG grant, so probably somewhere in the straight three to five years ago, probably closer to five years ago now. We were told by FireTech and Safety, who we bought it through and has serviced it for the last 15-ish years now, um, that Eagle Air had, you know, either gone out of business or kind of moved on with the product line, and that they would no longer really support and produce product for that Eagle compressor that we have. They said, hey, it's probably going to be a couple years. We know we have a ton of stock. We sold a lot of these units. They're in great shape and, and just service-wise, replacing filters and whatnot. This year has been the first year that we finally run into, yeah, we don't have those parts. So, um, we've been able to find some aftermarket parts to make everything work. The compressor's running operational currently. The fill station probably needs some repair work shortly. Um, but we know that that was coming up for replacement, one way or the other, um, and it makes a ton of sense to, again, either purchase it at some point in the next year, get it replaced, um, not knowing what the next repair possibility will look like. So we reached out, uh, to a bunch of different vendors. Everybody kind of had a different take on what we were trying to do, uh, which was fine because I think it gave us a ton of good options. Um, FireTech and Safety, again, quoted us. They, they quoted us for Bauer Legacy compressor. We'd just be buying a compressor that puts us into the same boat. Bauer, it's a legacy compressor because they're no longer making that compressor anymore, and we're going to be, we're going to get six years out of it if we're lucky, and quite honestly, it's kind of expensive for what it is. Um, they quoted us a Unicus, which is really cool and fancy. John would love it because it's like all computer-based and stuff, but, um, quite, uh, there's a couple of reasons. First off, it's pushing a hundred thousand dollars. It really, when you can replace the compressor for something in that 50 to $60,000 window and it'll be perfectly fine, I don't think it makes any sense. Even if it did make a ton of sense, um, I think we would have to remove the door to get, to get it in. So, uh, because it's like a solid quarter of an inch that it's not going to clear the door frame. Um, we got a couple of quotes on that. It was all in that roughly 90 to 100,000 dollar range. The FireMatic compressor was kind of close to the price that I'm, uh, proposing tonight, um, but it's for a system that it's a smaller CFM, uh, which isn't a huge deal. Current, the current one we have, I believe, is 13 or it's 14. Um, and all that is, is like when we're filling the bottles back up, or we, under our contracts, fill Danbury's Cascade or, or so on and so forth, just takes that much longer. Is going from a 13 or 14 to an 18 going to save us a ton of time? No, but it'll save a little bit of time. Um, and especially like when there's a fire in the area, we're generally refilling everybody's bottles, right? So we have to recycle that.
So it's also less duty cycles.
What's that?
It's less duty cycles.
Yeah.
The higher the CFM.
Well, it'll still hold, it will still have the same four, 6,000 pound bottles.
Yeah.
Um, but it'll
Doesn't have to run as long.
Run a little bit less, yeah. So from an oil and maintenance filter standard.
Runs less to refuel.
Right, yeah. So ultimately, the, the best thing that, that came forward and, and IPS brought their, kind of their lead compressor tech guy in and, and said, here's all the options, right? We can furnish you with a fancy new one, or your fill station's your fill station. Does it need some work? It needs some seals replaced. It needs a couple of pieces of tubing replaced. We'd have to change out the regulator, but it's still just air in and air out. It's just diverting valves. So their answer was, let's budget about $4,000, which we feel pretty comfortable will be the number to refurb that. The biggest none of that is replacing the regulator to match up with the, uh, the new machine, and then just replace the compressor. And then kind of to be able to get that little higher CFM compressor, it ends up being, to me, the best value for the money that we would have, and it ends up being the cheapest option. So everything's in there at the end of the day. You're welcome to look at and ask questions. The current pricing is $52,185, um, to do just what I said, new compressor, uh, service and kind of repair, make new on the fill station, and then hydro the current bottles because we just continue to reuse those until they fail hydro, um, with an approximately additional $1,165 for electrical work from Goodrum, um, who's, who we quoted through. The biggest portion of that is they have to replace the breaker to a 60 amp breaker. Um, that's the compressor. The currently, the fund is roughly, give or take, or we looked at the numbers today, 430,000. So obviously, take out 54-ish, call it, thousand, and, and that's where the fund will end up sitting in the 380s if we were to move forward with taking it out of the capital reserve fund.
Refresh my memory, for those on the board that aren't familiar, private contract works with the other towns as far as...
Hey, that was my first question.
Yep, so the other towns currently pay a hundred dollars a year. Um, it works out perfect, and it will continue the way the, the service agreements are looking like they'll go if we go this route. Um, that effectively, with that money, they pay out of the compressor. So all that money goes in, one year we pay with their funds, and then the next year we pay it out of the SCBA budget. So we pay for a maintenance, let's say it's, it's been between like 11 and 1,500 dollars over the last 10 to 15 years. So roughly, right, 1,200-ish because it's about six towns that pay into it. We pay that one year out of the compressor fund. The fund continues to build. The next year, the town of Bristol pays for the entirety of it. Um, that's how it's currently set up.
Could we get more money out of the contract, uh, the towns that are not contracted with us, otherwise?
I think we can try, um, yeah, I mean, we can try.
It seems like a bargain to them. That's the only reason I say that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, um, there's one town that's working on trying to do their, their own compressor fill station. I think they have kind of everything ready to go. They're just haven't got it done yet. Um, and then I continuously hear from some other towns. I don't disagree. The thought process was, is if we increased it this year, we would probably look to go to at least 200, um, because that would effectively put it in the ballpark of you're paying for it one year, and then they pay half and we pay half, which I think is a little bit better balance based on the usage that's currently
Five.
Yeah, I, we, I, we can try whatever.
And then the other question was, like, I know we, we've always played nice in the sandbox with fishing game, but can we get some money out of that for this town?
Yeah, we can certainly look into that.
So how many external organizations use the compressor?
Uh, it's six or seven. I think it might be six with, no, it's definitely six.
Three contract towns.
Hebron, Bull's Wire and New Hampton. So six, and then Fishing Game also uses it 50% of the time.
Okay, so I, sorry, I'm a little confused by this. So you've got three options in front of us, right? Basically, you're saying, do you like this option the best? You look good with, um, a hundred thousand if you were going to buy a brand-new compressor?
A, a brand-new fancy R2D2 compressor.
Right. But right now, we have other towns that come to us that are con, we're, we're contractually providing them the services to fill their tanks, right? And they're paying us a hundred dollars a month?
No, a year.
A hundred dollars a year to fill their tanks?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe a thousand, brother.
Well, uh, so how much did this thing cost originally 15 years ago?
It was grant-funded. So largely, I would argue that largely, the biggest reason we got the compressor fill station, we didn't have, um, containment capacity, so that's like a factor that helps, but was the fact that it's a regional use type item. So it, what it cost us, it would, it cost us 5% of, right, it was roughly $40,000, so.
Okay, so, but right now, if, if you were to say, we're going to provide these services, you're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars, brand-new, and the useful life of the thing is, would you say it's been around for 10 years now?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. So, but if you were to buy something brand-new today and provide those services, well, how long would you say it would last? 10? I mean, what's a reasonable sort of guess?
I think 15 is reasonable. I mean, I, I think we ran into a, the classic Motorola Lifepack issue. Hey, we don't make that anymore, so we don't serve it.
All right, so let's, let's call it 20, just to make it easy math for a second.
Mm-hmm.
So at 20 years, that means the town of Bristol is on the hook. If we spend a hundred, just using a hundred thousand again at the moment, okay?
Mm-hmm.
That means we're going to spend $5,000 every year. Like, if you look at it, you advertise it out, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so that's how I'm trying to back into, like, how many times it gets used. So how do you figure out what it's worth, right? So now you're going to spend $50,000 to fix it. So basically, when we fix it now, we're going to spend $50,000. So it's good beyond doing regular maintenance for the next 15 years. Because I'm, guess I'm trying to figure out why it isn't, like, no, most towns don't want to spend this. Why should we spend, like, why shouldn't we try to figure out a scenario where we go to somebody else where they get to spend a hundred thousand dollars?
Sure, I don't disagree, but the town of Bristol fills bottles pretty much every day of the week.
Yeah, okay.
So.
It is, it is used far.
I'm, I'm, I'm not here to argue the use. I'm just going, I'm like, the finances, basically. The numbers are the numbers. So if it's a hundred thousand dollars, it's good for 20 years. That means
Five, five hundred bucks a year.
Right, like, like, so, so, you know, however we need to look at it.
We only collect $600.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. So we're on the hook for all this stuff, right? So we have the maintenance.
So I say, I say we go to a thousand dollars a year for the departments that are contracted, in a contract with us already.
Yeah.
And then instead of asking them for a hundred dollars a year, we include that in our services part of the RMS contract.
I'm just trying to back it up. At the end of the day, I'm trying to back into a number that sort of like goes, how do we make sure, I'm not looking to gaffe anybody. I'm looking to, okay, what's appropriate. I want to be what's appropriate for us and you know what I mean?
Because they don't, what, what are we getting returned from all those other towns?
Well, I was just, can I ask a question about the other towns? How often are, you said Bristol is doing it pretty much every day.
Mm-hmm.
How often are the other towns doing it?
Maybe fill a couple bottles quarterly, and then, um, you know, obviously if they have a fire, right, they're going to burn through five, six, 10 bottles, whatever. I, listen, I, I have no problem asking them for more money, right?
No, no.
And I understand it completely. I just want it to be super clear that we shouldn't, one, necessarily base this replacement off of it, but I don't want anybody leaving here today going, okay, the compressor fund is going to see $5,000 to $6,000, or $3,000 to $6,000 in it next year, because I can guarantee nobody's going to pay a thousand dollars to use that, right? So, which is fine. It's a little less use, right?
Yeah.
So it's a little less maintenance. I just want to be perfectly clear. Don't expect to look at the compressor fund next year and see, buy branded.
That, that's not the intent. People in this town are sick and tired of funding and supporting other towns around us.
Mm-hmm.
Listen, if, if the cost, everybody that I've ever talked to, and this is for me, if the other towns, you, you know, you've done a, a great job with the, with the, all the ambulatory contracts, right? Like, if you look at that, you're very thoughtful with the other towns around, what are our costs, and how do you make sure that everybody's on the same page? I think no matter what we do, that's sort of the scenario we have to get into. When you look at the cost of equipment generically, right, rate of inflation, the amount, how much things, you know, what equipment is costing, we are going to have to figure out how we partner better with others around us. So it's, it's not that. It's, it's how do we make sure it's a portion? Will I pay 500?
Well, I was going to say, if you just go off of what Ben said, roughly five to 10 bottles a quarter.
Yeah.
Roughly, maybe more if there's a fire. So that's, oh, I did 40. Actually, I keep thinking quarter is four, but it's, it's
But it's not just that.
But it's $25 a bottle, though.
I mean, is New Hampton still filling their entire cascade system?
Yeah.
But it's $25 a bottle is at a thousand dollars, if that's what they're doing.
That's cheap.
What's a dive shop charge?
I don't, I, I'll be honest, I understand.
I'm not here to say
This isn't, this isn't ganging up on you.
No, I just, I, at the end of the, and I, it's not a ganging up thing. I can't sit here and say, yeah, per gallon, I'll pay a thousand dollars, right? So I'll work on it, but at the end of the day, I just
Charge that tank.
What's going on?
Listen, what, all, all I'm saying is, is, is we can back into the math and figure out what it is per bottle and whatnot.
I can tell you what the general says.
Good. I just did a quick math.
Yeah.
50,000 over 15 years, and seven, seven people, you know, seven towns using that equipment is about $450 a year per person.
There you go.
I mean, this is general
That's not the maintenance that's, that's just
I, I understand.
And here's the deal. We got the first one for free essentially because it was a brand.
Yeah.
So we're not going to be charging people for something we got for free because actually you can't do that.
Yeah.
We go to the other towns and say, okay, the free one, the free one's used up. We have to buy a new one. Everybody should share equally in, in the overhead cost, you know, 450 bucks.
And you don't want to do that?
I can tell you what dive shops, what I just searched, by the way. General U.S. range standard is $5 to $10 per tank. New Hampshire examples, Dive One of Asaki in Wolfboro, regular air $7, ultra pure air $10, nitrox 15, and an air cart is 10 fills at $60.
So $1,000.
But it's not, but it's not, um, it's kind of like the ambulance, right? It's not, what does the ambulance, I shouldn't have to, I shouldn't have to pay for the ambulance because I, I pay, I pay taxes, or, um, it's the availability, right? So you're paying, it's not just
You're not paying for your ride.
Paying $25, you know, a bottle. It's, you're playing, you're, you're paying for that availability because otherwise where are they going with it?
We're, we're how, we're buying it.
Conian?
We're housing it. We're maintaining it. We're providing the personnel to deal with it when they come to, they come to our fire station and have to back their cascade trailer and fill it.
All right, so, so we can also look at the math a little differently. So when you, we're talking about how many times we fill up. You said we fill up a bottle every day?
A couple, yeah.
All right, so, so two or three?
Or is it?
No, we, we did three bottles a day at, what, 10 bucks a piece? Right, is that what you said?
Yeah, well, that's
That's $1,000 a year.
Yeah.
That's, okay, and then, so then at a thousand dollars a year, that's, we got 50 years' worth of, of expense we're about to spend, 50 grand. That's, I, I mean, you can work this either way. That, that's why for them, it's, it's, they may not want to pay us the 450, then they're going to go
It's more than a thousand.
Thousand.
It's 10.
They can go somewhere else. Tell them to go to Plymouth.
All I'm saying is, it's the same argument, no matter what financial discussion. It's like, okay, maybe we, maybe, maybe we don't have the compressor and we go to somebody else. I don't know.
Because nobody else is providing these services to us.
I, I, yeah. Okay, you can look at, what it comes down to, it's a thousand dollar change on a fire apartment budget. Even like Alexandria, a thousand dollar change on that budget is not, it's not the end of the day.
No.
End of the world.
And we're not asking Alexandria for that.
Because there are your contract, there are your contract towns.
Oh, okay, I got you. So it's like
Rich Water, Hebron.
But the contract towns are paying, they are essentially paying for some of that because is that built into the?
Yeah, well, they've paid the hundred dollars now. I don't, I don't disagree that it's, it's probably a, a worthwhile gesture to not increase them to a thousand dollars, but I certainly am going to go probably for two to 250 because it makes a ton of sense.
Sure.
You know? But yeah, no, easy enough. I'll work on it.
Yeah. And then just tell Fishing Game, 10, 12 bottles, and sell them a bill.
I would just offer Fishing Game the same price, to be honest with you. It's a thousand bucks or go to Franklin, Plymouth, Littleton, wherever you're at, you know?
Because, well, that's the thing. When they come to fill, they come with 20 or 30 bottles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have their whole dive show, right?
What's that?
They have a, they bring their whole dive show, right?
Yeah, they basically, as, as the training situation goes, right, if it's like the notch south, they'll come and, and fill at ours. So it's, you know, three to four times a year, and then that, whether they use Littleton or Berlin or somebody up north, that's, is generally good to use.
It, it's one thing when they come here for an emergency, but when they're coming here for regular training, and then they're showing up with 20, 30 bottles, that's, and not to mention the amount of time they're tying up a town employee to fill those.
True.
Look, I mean, at the end of the day, for me, when it comes to the math on all this, it's a, I always want everybody to have whatever the right equipment is, right? Because especially for you guys, you guys in police, you have jobs that require you to try to help us when we're in, when, when, when a town, when somebody, a resident, has to see you guys on a day that's a bad day, it's a really bad day for that person, and you guys have a difficult job to do. So not having the right equipment, to me, is not an option. But where the discussion has to happen is the balancing act between, we're a town of 3,000, we swell to 9,6, 9,000 in the summertime, right? Like, it's that comparison of how do we get to those services? So the example here of, I want to spend 50,000 on a compressor. It's not about the compressor. You need to make sure you have good, clean air that we can fill tanks. It's the balancing act of, do we go and fill someplace else? Does that give us more money for the, for the truck that we need, right? Like, it's, it becomes that thing, right? So I just want to be clear, because this is not a, I don't want to have a piece of equipment. It's an evaluation of what's the most efficient way for you guys to get what you guys need financially. So anyways, I just want to make sure I'll be clear. Chris?
Any other questions?
And I may have missed you. Were you good with moving forward with the purchase now?
Uh, I don't.
These are purchase orders.
What other quick question before we do what we had?
Yeah.
Lifespan on the bottles?
Which bottles?
The filled, the bottles on the system?
Uh, whatever they are, it's unlimited, provided they get hydro every five years, five or 10 years.
Yeah, I thought, I couldn't remember if those were 20 or 30-year expiration or those, or
No, I don't believe there is. That was the discussion that we had, well, the factors there.
As long as they pass.
As they pass, yeah.
Yeah, they're not, they're steel. They're not a compaul, they're not a compaul. Alright, that's all.
Um, there, the purchasers weren't in your files, in your folders, but if you want to approve them for me to sign?
So which one do we know?
Uh, the one that's
IPS.
IPS. Well, one, you don't have to really do the Goodrum one. That's under the
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve purchase order 004749 for the purchase from Industrial Protection Services LLC for a new fire apartment compressor and authorize the town manager to sign.
Aye. Town manager, yeah, I'll second, yeah.
So a motion by Sean, second by John to approve the purchase of a new compressor. Any further discussion?
You don't sign it.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations on your compressor.
Yeah, we're going to get the, we're going to take the money.
Yeah, right. Yeah, from the capital reserve fund. Uh, I would love to take it out of the capital reserve fund, but I think we could probably do it out of this, that portion out of this year's budget, which is, probably makes more sense. You know what I mean?
There might be something in general, in the general government electric line as well.
Okay.
And if the board was okay with that, if his budget couldn't cover it, so.
Well, I was going to say, we could take it out of the, I mean, it's part of, it's part of that equipment, so it could, could be taken out.
If you were going to do that, then you do have to approve this.
Yeah.
It's, um, sorry, Tom.
We're currently trending like 32, which will probably be a little higher, 1,000 under budget for the year end, so I'm pretty sure I could find a spot in the budget just to do it that way.
That'd be clean.
Alright.
So Ben is also here to talk to you about, um, warrant articles. Um, that is, there are two other documents in your folders that you can look at. One is, I can get to my folder. Um, O3B is the warrant article discussion. It's got the memo, includes everything. Um, and then O3C is some potential funding option for engine two, if you decide to move forward, so.
So what I've put together is the idea, right, that we've been talking about for a while now, which, one, is that engine two's replacement needs to get purchased sooner than later, and whether that's within the next couple of months, within the next year, within the next 18 months. The problem, when you get past 18 months, you're just going to keep tacking what seems to be like 10% a year onto the price of it. So I just onto the price of it, so I just throw that out there. The issue is, we don't have the money. And I think that's a twofold problem, I put a lot of blame, right, on the fact that we've never really funded that correctly, and I think that's a big portion of it. Also a big portion in the last five years, fire trucks have gone from a likely replacement of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a million dollars. So, it's a little bit of a balance of both. I think, kinda the, the board is, is really faced with the fact that, some way or another, to me, the way I look at it, it comes down as simple as this, we need to buy Engine Two, it's gonna be about a million dollars. The latter's purchase date is probably sometime in the next five to seven years. However that works, maybe it's eight, maybe it's four, even if it's ten, it doesn't matter, it's gonna be two point something million dollars, right? And on top of that, if you combine kind of all the capital spending, we have ambulance purchases in there. So, we have roughly, uh, three and a half million dollars worth of stuff to buy in the next twelve years. That's just the truth of it. And we have seventy-five, ninety thousand dollars in the ambulance SRF, that's in fine shape. And we have three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the, in the Capital Reserve account. Mathematically, we need to be in the ballpark of about a half a million dollars a year, one way or the other. And whether that's half a million dollars into the Capital Reserve account, we change the SRF, we, I have no idea what the other options, or we finance. And the financing option looks the same, you still need to be thinking ahead to what the latter looks like and what vehicles look like and what hydraulic tools and all the other purchases that are coming down the pipe in the next fifteen years. But then you're gonna have a hundred and twenty to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of financing. And when the latter comes up, it bumps up to two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars worth of financing, whatever the, the option is we go with. So, initially, my thought was, we're just in a position where we have to finance Engine Two. I don't personally think that's the way to go for a number of reasons. I know the town administrator has some real concerns with kinda where we're at on our debt schedule, not just from a numbers, right, but just legally, how much can we borrow and all of that, good happy stuff. So really, kinda the first page of this is that. To me, it was, how do we fix the, the reserve accounts? We have two accounts, we have the ambulance SRF, which is specifically currently sixty thousand dollars a year worth of billing revenue, goes into that fund. It needs an adjustment within the next year or two, to make sure that we're still covering the ambulance purchases out of it. The Capital Reserve account is not gonna have two point one million dollars in it in six years when we need to replace the ladder truck, so what, what's the answer? And to me, it's either continue putting, say, four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars more into the CRF, or is the better opportunity, in my opinion, to take and go this year and say, change the ambulance SRF. Again, we gotta kinda clarify everything with DRA, we're pretty sure we can do it, but change the ambulance SRF. Change it to the purpose for which it's set up is replacement of ambulances and motorized firefighting apparatus. And then put up to five hundred thousand dollars in billing revenue into that account every year, which is roughly a four hundred and forty thousand dollar loss in revenue. Yes, I understand that that impacts everything, right? But we've gotta, one way or the other, we're gonna spend four to five hundred plus thousand dollars, basically a year over the next ten to fifteen years to support these purchases. That, to me, is the cleanest change we can make. It incentivizes us continuing to do the good job we do with billing. If we have years where the billing's down, it's not a function of a town meeting argument that, well, revenues are down or this is down, revenues are down. We've gotta look at the long-term plan and say, we can only buy this truck maybe when it comes due, or we've gotta make these changes to the plan. It doesn't change the fact that we should still be funding the Capital Reserve account because we've got SUVs, pickups, hydraulic tools. When air packs come due, that's gonna be probably a four hundred thousand dollar bill. Radio replacement in ten years is gonna be probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus, right? So, we would still be building up that fund, but instead of, you know, what could potentially be a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand dollars this year going into it, it would change it to fifty thousand dollars. And we would change the SRF to include the language for the purpose, and we would change it to include that it's up to five hundred thousand dollars in billing revenue. That's kinda what this says, and that's my pitch.
It's the revolving, it's the revolving fund.
Revolve, revolve, what's the S?
It's a special revenue fund.
Special revenue fund.
Okay.
So, it, we have, it's the ambulance revolving.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
Currently, you have sixty thousand dollars, the first sixty thousand dollars we take in are patient revenue, right? It's supposed to, we have paid it yet, we will be, but it's supposed to go into the fund. So, that would change that amount and the purpose of the fund.
So you're saying, all the major equipment, take out of the SRF, and then still vehicles, you know, compressor, all that stuff, take out of the existing equipment fund?
Yeah.
Or use that for, for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and I guess just to be clear, and I'm happy to provide whatever tonight, I didn't bring a ton tonight. It was really, if you guys want option one, option two, option three, I'll give you as much information as you want on all of them. If you kinda concur with my assessment on what seems to make the most sense, I'm happy to put it into a little bit better package that makes more sense, or whatever. You know, get us clearer numbers on finance and I'll get you clearer numbers on finance, and that was my hope tonight, cause.
My feeling is that if we're, if we're gonna change, if we're going to change the ambulance fund and start putting significantly more than we have been into Capital Reserve for the fire department, then we pretty much use up the rest or nearly all of what we have on the other fund, three fifty, say, for, and finance the rest, you know, for Engine Two, deplete that. Leave some in it for, you know, small things, but if four hundred thousand is gonna go into the other fund.
No.
Yeah, effectively, four hundred and fifty thousand is gonna go into the SF fund.
Are you gonna say get rid of the Capital Reserve?
I'm not saying get rid of that, I'm saying we put everything that we can toward the down payment on Engine Two.
What's, I mean, I, I see two separate conversations now, you're sort of combined.
Well, yeah, sure, it's two separate conversations, cause we're talking about that, that fund, but in the end, we still have to purchase Engine Two.
But yeah, but I, yeah, let's, I mean, we should talk about that next. This is, this is just changing the way, the way we're funding.
Well, but there's, there's only two.
So that's, but I, and with that, I'd like to sit down and, and work on the cash flows and stuff myself, but.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, now I think we should switch over and talk about Engine Two.
Before you switch over though, I mean, are you, are you at least want us to do some more research and bring it to you? Because we have to clarify first, the work, the, how we, if we can change it, which I believe we can, we changed the transfer station revolving fund.
Yeah, you can change, you can change.
So, we just have to do.
Anytime, anytime.
Right.
Either way, we're gonna be, we're going to be putting four to five hundred, like you said, we're gonna be putting four to five hundred thousand dollars a year, whether that is from revenue or from the capital.
It's, but, yeah, it still comes out of the same swimming.
It's gonna come out of somewhere, right?
Exactly.
But I like, I like, I personally like Ben's thought on it, I think it's actually a good way of, of changing.
So here's, here's, here's the question.
If the numbers work out.
Here's the question, I'm really trying to take a break with this, but here's the question that keeps coming through my head, okay? We function the way we function today. The basic complaint from a community perspective is we provide stuff to others and, and we're the ones holding the bag. And we have good evidence around how we make sure that we don't do that, like the ambulatory contracts and stuff like that. We have evidence about how we do that, okay? But right now, there's an actual load of, we have a ladder truck, we've got an engine, we've got three ambulances, we've got a couple of trucks, you've got all the other equipment we just talked about. So, what's the annual cost? What's the annual depreciation number for the department, based on all the equipment it needs every year, based on their replacement cycles? And the reason why I do it that way is, that's actually how you figure out how much money has to be in the revolving fund. Because the challenge I think we have, in particular at town meeting, is we go in and we say, okay, hey, we need, we need a new engine, right? And we're having a whole conversation about the engine, and the engine's a million bucks, and here's why we need it. But that's really only thirty percent of the story. I mean, it's a major piece of equipment for us, and again, back to my previous comments, you guys need the equipment you need to do the job that you need. The hard part, I think, for everybody to swallow is to run the fire department, cause we're, what, two million dollars a year now to run the fire department? So, what does that look like? Cause it's, I, I still don't understand, like, I know you talked about a lot of equipment, but I don't understand how much we should be putting in the fund every year, what the actual replacement cycle is, how often does the truck actually get used, how many miles, how many calls do we go on, like, you know, is there an opportunity for us to work with the other communities around us that we provide ambulance services for? You know, maybe Engine Two's not the right one, maybe the ladder truck is the better one. I don't know, I, I thought New Hampton had a ladder truck, maybe there's an opportunity to go, you know what? Because the cost of the equipment is getting so large, we have to come up with a scenario where each community figures out how to support each other, so we leapfrog each other. So, hey, you know what, we've got, the replacement cycle on ladder truck is ten years, but that means we buy one every twenty, and New Hampton, but, I don't know, like, all I'm saying is, I think we have to take a look at who we have other contracts with, like the ambulance stuff. How can we look at some of this equipment that's getting out, it's, it, to a large degree, is getting out of hand? Cause when you look at our town of three thousand with, how many homes do we have?
Can I put your calls for a second?
Yeah, violence, please. I, cause I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to.
So, I, I appreciate your idea. And, the problem is, is, I'm gonna give the other night as a perfect example. They had a garage fire, or a fire with exposure in Alexandria. Our guys got there first, knocked down the fire, extended to the building, stopped the fire in the garage, saved the building. And a comment made to me from a taxpayer from another community was.
Wow.
That, right there, justifies the amount of increase that we, that we paid to the town of Bristol in our contract. Because we have those three guys there that rolled out of that station and put out that fire. The problem is, is you're relying, so let, let's say for instance, we get Bridgewater to buy a ladder truck, or New Hampton to buy a ladder truck, that's not a man's station. So, operationally, that's the second piece that we rely on being there, so you can get it in the right place, so. So the next reliable ladder truck's coming from either Plymouth or Franklin, which is fifteen, ideally twenty minutes away from, from a man's station, if they're at the station. So it's gonna be twenty minutes before that truck gets there, by the time it gets there, it's not even gonna be able to get to where it needs to be.
Listen, at the end of the day, I, I'm not disagreeing with the operational premise that you have, right? All I'm saying is the math is becoming simple. If our only choice is that we are absorbing whatever the cost increases are at the rate that we're saying that we're absorbing the cost increases, then we can mathematically tell you in, you know, let's just say, I think you said ten percent or whatever, but whatever, whatever the number is, okay? If we're two million dollars now, in ten years, at ten percent a year, we're, you know, we're gonna be almost three.
The, the solution to the problem is regionalization.
Yeah, yes.
And maybe we're the right spot.
We can sit there and say it till we're blue in the face, but.
But you're not gonna get.
You gotta get the other towns to buy it.
The other towns aren't gonna do it, cause they'll lose their identity.
That's fine, so then, so then take a step back for a second, but then what we are telling Bristol then is, if you want fire department services, then this is what it's going to cost you, this is the projection. Again, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do it, I'm saying, I want the math, kinda like when we, when we were talking earlier on the side about some of the budget stuff, right? Like, if you look at a ten thousand dollar tax bill, using round numbers, you know, roughly eighteen hundred to two thousand dollars of that is for the fire department. And if, and if you as a taxpayer feel good about that, then that's awesome, right? Like, I'm, I'm not trying to take it away, it's more like the, there is, there is, there is a reality to the math and to the services that we provide. And I, I just wanna make sure that we, we are articulate with that, because, you know, by saying, okay, this is the replacement cycle, this is when we're gonna do this, we can actually be pretty predictive around what it's gonna do to the taxes over time. That's what I'm getting at, that's all.
Well, the, the thing with the fire.
We need, listen, we need a fire department.
We don't have, we don't have contract agreements for fire service. It's a different.
No, but we do for ambulance, right? And we got three ambulances.
Well, like what you said, basically was, because we have the ambulance contracts, we're able to have two people on duty.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, seven, right, so they can get on that apparatus and.
The point was, is it was a benefit to that contract?
A hu- a hundred percent, and I, and I don't, but I'm, I'm saying, you can't say, you know, we go to Plymouth, you know, five times last year, so we get, you know, we get X amount of dollars, it doesn't.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I, I wasn't suggesting that, what I was saying was, if we had something with a contract town, because we're contracted together, we have a level of regionalization today.
Yeah.
Is there a way for us to leverage each other?
I think there is, but then, like.
But, but it's different, it's. Let's relate this to baseball, baseball, you have major league teams, you have triple A teams, you have double A teams.
Yeah.
And, there's not, there's only so many major league teams in the leagues right now.
Yeah.
And it's, you can't, so i- if, if you say, hey, you know, I don't wanna say a specific town, but east, whatever, you're gonna buy all, buy the ladder truck, but what good does that ladder truck do if it doesn't leave the station?
It's true, that, that's absolutely true. So all I'm saying is, if they have, so the point was, is, let's, I'm gonna use New Hampton, cause I don't know, I don't know jack about New Hampton Fire Department, I'm not suggesting, I'm just gonna use New Hampton for the moment. Let's say they have one, and it allowed us to delay, that we came up with an agreement that made sense, right? Like you agreed operationally that it made sense of how we responded, and it gave us five extra years to do the savings. Then it reduces how much we have put in every year into the Capital Reserve Fund to get to the point where we don't have to finance it, and then we get to go buy the next ladder truck. And then that allows them to get rid of theirs, and then, you know what I mean, it becomes reciprocal, like, it becomes almost a game of tents.
So operationally, you already have those agreements, so any reported building fire in the town of Bristol, yeah, in Alexandria, and that's coming right off the bat, so they can only provide so much.
Anyways, that's, that, that's what I'm getting at, it's, it's, it's more like, I think we gotta be able to be articulate with, with the utilization.
The plan for the last thirty years has been flawed, and it's easy, you fix it now, or it's gonna continue to be flawed. So, you, you have, the, the space, the spacing of those apparatus should have been spread out. The, the, the time, you know, just say in twenty-five dollars, twenty-five years on each one, is flawed because this one we're trying to replace is the one that hits the most use.
Yeah.
You know, the ladder truck, you can probably get an extra five or ten years out of, uh, ten, but.
So sorry, so, it's the most used, I thought Engine Four got the.
No, this is, well, in, in town, it is the most used.
So refresh my memory, maybe I have it mixed up, is in, is Engine Two, is that tanker, is that the, that your tech?
Engine Two's the primary tech.
Primary, okay, I, I had reversed.
Yeah, it not only, not only for fire suppression, but also for, it also runs on every motor vehicle accident, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause it carries all the rescue work, so, and other, other such.
Right, right.
I guess, for me, and I'm happy to help you with it if you wanted, like, I can go through it at any point. Like, I would like to try to figure out what the actual regular annual depreciation should be across the asset classes that are needed for the fire department. Cause that would give you a good way to be able to say, this is how much needs to go into the CIP or the savings fund every year that covers all of the equipment we have.
Sure.
And then, cause then, cause if we did that properly, so to your point, we did it properly, then we wouldn't be going for a special warrant article that then gets added, that then is sort of issued in a different way, that's all.
At, at the end of the day, the select board is still the agents to expend that fund. So, if you see at some point that we have more than enough money in that fund, you can also back what's going into that fund down. I mean, it's not just gonna be a referral spending account.
Well, and, so when, and, you know, the other thing I was thinking about the other day, okay, so we have a lot of money that goes into highway, right? We have, cause we have several funds, cause highway, highway equipment is in the same vein of, when you go and you buy a backhoe, like, this stuff is expensive, it's not even expensive when you go and buy some of this equipment. So some of it becomes a, okay, what's the priority for the town, and then how do we do that, sort of, across it all? Because maybe, maybe there are things in other, that. Because maybe, maybe there are things in other, that, that we, we set aside, that we now say, you know what? We look at all of the needs, maybe we don't wanna replace something else at the same scale. I don't know. I, I don't wanna pay interest, I mean, at the end of the day, I don't wanna pay interest because it's, I don't see any value to the town. The only value that I see to the town is us going, we need the equipment now, we weren't able to plan, so because we weren't able to plan, that's our penalty that we gotta go pay a bag to go, that we need money. And I, and I, I wanna minimize, or at least be able to articulate what we think the impact of taxes is over time, because you got the revale this year, which is, you know, whatever it's been. You know, when we go in and we start adding all this stuff up separately, you end up, we're increasing, and rightfully so, because to your point, like, you, you have scenarios where, okay, well, there's too much at one time, and we didn't put enough savings away to be able to buy the thing, never mind account for all the inflation. So, anyway.
What you've just described is what the CIP, that's what we do. We do have a plan for that. It's just some of the whammies that we've had.
Problem is with it, you're talking about three vehicles on a twenty-five year rotation that were all replaced within ten years.
Right.
Because previous to that, they-
Exactly.
Yeah, hadn't been.
Hadn't planned. Exactly.
Well, and, and also you put some blame to the select board, not necessarily on these vehicles, but if you choose not to replace it because of funding that particular year, then you've put their plan out of whack. And that's why we end up replacing too many vehicles all at the same time.
Right, in our previous funding, chiefly that with the ambulances, and that's why we got behind on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only other, the only other thing that would be really interesting to understand is, for a community our size, given our goals, do we have the right equipment load as compared to others? Because we're not stone players from that perspective.
Yeah.
Right? And if the answer is yes, then there's a whole level of, here's the bill. Right? Like, I, you know, I'm not trying to be rash at all towards the, the, all of us that have to pay our property taxes, but like, if I have a fire at my house, I'll be damned, I want the right equipment to show up. I want them to have the right equipment to go run in if they're gonna go drag my fat ass out the door.
That's how far it's gone.
You know? You know, like, I mean, so straight up, like, you know, I want that, but at the same time, it's just this balance of, how do we make sure we get to the right pieces, and then we do the right financial planning? And I hate paying interest. I just aggravates me.
Just apple-plucked it in that. Average everyday attack fire truck is a million dollars for depreciating asset.
We can buy a subfin for one point three if you wanna feel better about it.
Yeah.
Ben, when, when did we actually have this planned out for CIP thirty-one for Engine Two?
Yeah.
That's what it says. It says thirty-one-
It says thirty-one.
The ladder truck is out.
And it says, if we, if we bought it at town, if we went through with a town meeting, it would come between twenty-nine and thirty-one. That's how far out there.
For Engine Two?
Yeah, so Engine Two, according to CIP, says thirty-one replacement, which was twenty-five years based on when it showed up at the station in two thousand six.
However-
We have been arguing for a long time that it should have never been a twenty-five year truck. It just, it sees way too much usage, and we're just in a position now where it will be twenty-five years old, roughly, twenty-three to twenty-five years old when it's gone. The reason it needs to get purchased really in the next year is because even though manufacturers are still specking this stuff out and saying, yep, you'll have it in three years, nobody is seeing fire trucks faster than four years. And some people are sitting on five years and still don't have trucks, so.
Okay. And that goes back to nine eleven, right? Essentially?
No, it's really COVID.
COVID?
Yeah.
Well, I mean-
It's COVID and Rev Group, this kind of conglomerate, there's a term for it, right? It's just, it's an investment group that bought basically every fire apparatus manufacturer. They've been in front of Congress a number of times now, and they're just overbidding everything, and they're delaying timeframe, so that basically they can step out and say, look at what we have for orders. That's a hundred percent what it comes down to. There's a few companies that have since kind of come out, or at least stayed away from Rev Group, and they're still reasonable, but even those reasonable companies still ended up a little over a million dollars, and we have a little bit better number that if we do some work with early chassis payment, we could be closer, probably even less, but I'll say nine fifty. That's still a million bucks, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But that's a used Dodge pickup truck away from a million bucks.
Or compressor.
Yeah. So, um, I, I guess what I'm hearing and what I have, I have all that work done. Right? So I think what makes a ton of sense, Don, if you have the time over, like, the short period of time, sometime between now and mid, next week, maybe, is to just look at what I've put together. You could kind of play with it on your own, or point out where I screwed something up. And then, to me, it really comes down to if there's an overwhelming urge not to pay interest, which I a hundred percent agree with, because I think we have options to figure it out otherwise. I could put it together, this is what it looks like if we wanna stay committed to a capital reserve fund and not mess with the SRF, or if we can't mess with the SRF if we find that out. They'll look basically the same. It's gonna be roughly five hundred and something thousand dollars a year, whether it's spending or loss of revenue, something in that neighborhood. And then when we come back to kind of more finalize what we're gonna do on the warrant two weeks from now, we can kind of have those answers, and then it's, you know, then at least decide, okay, well, maybe we need to finance it, maybe you find some super flaws, and it's just not gonna work, and that'll be on the warrant, or changing the SRF or a big number in the CRF. That's what makes sense to me. I'm happy to bring back more of that information. Don and I can kind of check the numbers and figure out what makes sense to package that up and show it. If that works for you.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see.
I'd love to just have one big nasty warrant article, and be done with it. That's the other benefit to changing SRF is, it kind of puts everything, I think, and you can hopefully confirm, the numbers are good, this is a great way to move forward, and we're kind of done talking about it, and we're not continuing to kick ourselves that we don't have the money to replace the ladder or even Engine Two currently, but-
So, if we put a down payment on it now, that locks in the price of it, even though we don't get it for years? Or do you have to pay for all of it to guarantee a price, or what's-
No, so at least high level, and, and the toy number just came in, so we really haven't been able to completely tear it apart, but let's say the toy number, the toy number was just shot, it was like nine seventy-something.
Okay.
We haven't even really, like, the discussion, they just included all that in their bid versus having the discussion with the other manufacturers. So right now, if we would say, yep, nine hundred and eighty thousand, it would really probably be a million dollars. His suggestion is a twenty thousand dollar contingency, because the newcomers motor hasn't been fully engineered yet with how it's been, a whole bunch-
Correct.
So we call it a million dollars.
Yeah.
If we, uh, agree that when the chassis gets delivered to the manufacturer, we're gonna pay the chassis then, it drops that number. Boy, I hope I got this right. Norm Scancy screwed this up twenty years ago. It drops that number.
Yeah, that's fine. Don't, don't commit the number. I'm not low per square meters.
Obviously, that's where we're gonna see that, that number. So, that's where we're gonna see that potential, you know, if there's an extra fifteen thousand dollar increase in the motor cost, that's where we'd see it. The rest of it'll be, it is what it is. We're gonna sign a contract, and that's the price or the balance, if we go that route, that we pay when it gets delivered.
So what's, is there, is there, okay, so, um, love the idea of paying, you know, remorse the page you go, right? Because I do think that that ultimately will save us. However, is there a clause in the contract that says, if you miss the deliver, so if you end up, if they say it's three years, you know, we gotta give them some buffer, but if it ends up being five, then there needs to be some sort of teeth on the other side to go, okay, well, you owe us now interest on our money or something, right? Because, because they're basically gonna tie up an asset that we're gonna have, right? Where, as far as I'm concerned, during the time that they're committing to build, three, let's just call it three years, that is what that is, like, no problem. But if they're tying up, tying us up for two more years, then there's gotta be something to go, okay, well, you now have an asset for the town. I don't know how reasonable that is.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, you don't pay the balance until they deliver. So if they're waiting on delivering, they're, they're losing money, because they're not getting the money that they've expended.
No, but to, and this is what a lot of towns are dealing with right now, is they're figuring out whether they're canceling orders, or they're figuring out what can they work into it? You know, years ago, there was an issue in Franklin, and they ended up getting a couple of vehicles out of it, something weird, right? And, and so, but the problem is, and the problem I see specifically with Engine Two is, if, let's say it's three years, and then all of a sudden it's five years before we got it, but we're expecting it in three years. I guarantee we're gonna spend probably something in the neighborhood of thirty to fifty, sixty thousand dollars, right, to, to fix Engine Two
Keep ours.
In year twenty-five and twenty-six. So, I, I don't have an answer to that. We don't have a contract currently. Is anybody building those in and out? Not currently that I know. It just becomes an argument, and most of them are somewhat willing to work on some level of solution. But it varies from, you know, town to town. So, um, it is something that, that the Truck Committee's already discussed, and, and would be part of that. Okay, we're gonna move forward with Toy or Four Guys or Subfin, or whoever we decide. Now that we're building the contract, what is that going to-
So what's the state contract look like when it come, because it's not like we're the only ones that buy fire trucks, kind of like with the police, right? Like, there's generally a state contract-
There's no state bid on fire trucks.
That would be an interesting sort of push, like, to have that question, kind of, okay, yeah, they're definitely, there's a lot that's just custom to a fire truck, but our engine fire truck is not that custom from other fire departments. Anyways, we can-
Yeah, that's the problem, is it's-
But, to that point, so HGAC exists. We've looked at it probably every time we've talked about fire apparatus. So HG, Houston, Galveston area compact. Basically, it's available to anybody in the country. It's, you know, that's, it's their state bid, so to speak. Um, and you'll go on there, and you'll say, well, look, you can get this Pierce for eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but that's base. That's, you're not, you're not doing any, you can, you can go in and talk to that dealer and say, okay, we wanna buy off HGAC, but, you know, that's a seven hundred and fifty gallon tank. We need a minimum of a thousand. We really should have twelve fifty. Okay, well, that's thirty-five thousand dollars more, right? So by the time you get done working on that, you end up in the same ballpark. Now, maybe you end up in a Pierce for a little bit less than what, you know, if you just went to Pierce and got a price. But, you end up in the same, roughly the same number. So, that's the closest thing you get to state bid on a fire truck, but again, by the time you get done, and even little tweaks, you, you end up in that same boat, the same number. And then typically, you're dealing with a dealer that is nowhere near the area, right? So, any sort, you know, not that we, at this point, we're not using New England Fire Apparatus for a lot of service and maintenance on the existing pieces, but when we do, at least it's three hours away in Connecticut and not in Louisiana or something.
So, which motor does the toy have?
It's that newcomers motor.
The X twelve?
You know I don't know motors, man.
Well, my question is, is there any way, so there's no way to secure the X twelve?
We've asked every manufacturer if there's anything left, and there is nothing that you could do about it.
And I know there was a mention of a hack power motor.
Yeah, I, that would be a little bit-
Would you call, would you call it a top caster?
Yeah.
Would you say a Houston one, too technical?
HGAC. It's Houston, Galveston area compact, I think is what it is, or commission, maybe, but-
Okay, anyways.
Yeah. Well, repeat that to Deff.
No idea.
I think that's all I had.
That's your Monday morning book.
That's your Monday afternoon book.
Uh, not great, to be honest with you. Or maybe that got moved. Something got moved. Not that meeting, though.
Okay, yeah. We can go back and forth, email.
Yeah.
Sit down for an hour sometime that you can find.
Yeah. I'll shoot you an email.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Anything else?
Hey, are you around tomorrow?
Yes.
What time is it?
It's around lunchtime.
What's that?
Have something around lunchtime.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Might have an idea, but I don't wanna even bring it up.
Yeah.
I'll get you a purchase order soon.
I'm trying not to cause trouble. It's not really worth it.
I don't wanna-
I know, I'm kidding.
I'll give you that tomorrow, too.
Have a good night.
See ya, thank you.
I'm just, I'm just beside myself. I'm gonna spend three million dollars on-
I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna keep my mouth shut.
It may be the right number. It's just not, yeah. You think it's more, or whatever.
I don't, I don't wanna say anything on the record. So, that's, that's-
All right. All right, here we go. What's next? Giddy up.
Year, warrant articles.
No, it's, um-
Continued warrant article discussion.
Yeah, so there's a couple documents, but the one you probably wanna look at first would be the draft A, which is under number four. Minor changes from last time. I wanted to give you a heads up of timeline. January twentieth, this draft warrant articles need to be to the Budget Committee. So we need to have the majority of this done by that meet, before that meeting, which means January eighth would be one of your final meetings. I don't know if you have to vote on it when I get it to the Budget Committee, but you wanna have it mainly ready to go when I bring it to the Budget Committee as the draft. And it depends too on what else we're doing, depending on if we have to do any bonding for loans to do a project, um, which is at East Street, um, et cetera, so. But, I haven't updated the first paragraph. You can skip that, but-
I'd like to see our goal, our goal two, uh, or X two, increase to thirty.
To thirty? Everybody good with that?
Yeah, we are. We have a brilliant, we have an adjusted one.
It's been a long time.
For anything, I think we flopped it, wasn't we, didn't we?
What?
We might have.
Yeah, I don't know, I felt-
What did we do?
Feel like it's been twenty or twenty-five for a long, long time.
It's been twenty-five for a long time. It might have been twenty for a few years, a little point two, but- Three, we, we need to talk about three. We need to decide what we're doing with fireworks, because we can't even put a number in until I, we've either picked a date and done something. What?
That's, that's a lot of excess.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a willingness to-
Postboard?
No. We go to option B, uh, but I just don't see logistically how that-
Option B would be ground?
Well, no, it'd be getting another provider.
I know. Well, we haven't tried, but it's, with it being next year being the two fifty, I think I'm gonna have a hard time.
It's gonna happen. I don't, so I think it's either we go to the fall, and you know, we don't do it at all.
Well, and we haven't been back in touch with them, so I'm hoping it's still open, but the date it said would be the following week, yeah.
And what was the number we were thinking about?
Well, we said thirty thousand when we thought it was gonna be on the fall. We basically had it hot, and we came, we basically said, yeah, we'd be okay with thirty on the fourth, and then he goofed us around. I think no matter what, we have to look. It may be a fooled errand, but I think we need to look. I think we need to find out, is there another option? Because, yes, maybe the right thing to do is to go the following weekend. What is the two hundred and fiftieth? Our biggest time of year and our largest driver from a local economy perspective is tourism.
But we're not gonna see so much of it. No, I, okay. What if we pick the fall days?
We're gonna get so much.
We did Old Home Day.
Then no one showed up for it when we did that. We did that with the bicentennial and it was like maybe a hundred people, 'cause I was here for that. Old Home Days, well.
Yeah, but we did it at the park.
We can't do it at the park?
No, no, we did. I thought we did the last Old Home Day, we did it at the park. This one would be at the lake.
Bicentennial in here, which was what, twenty nineteen? We did it at the lake.
You did?
Yes, uh, Old Home Day. And because.
It's just late in the season.
It's so late in the season, it just didn't work out. Doesn't mean it can't, it just didn't work out well.
Yeah, you know, end of August, people are thinking.
We'll probably review it, maybe it's just not here.
This, this is another company that literally, literally the first thing on their, uh, page says minimum of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, and that's not even providing a barge or anything like that.
So do the other guys provide a barge?
We don't have it anymore.
So, this goes back to what you said, right? Maybe you just need to say, rip the Band-Aid off and say, it's much, I'm very patriotic and I wanna celebrate, but maybe this isn't the year.
It, giving the fireworks company kind of screwed us.
I agree, uh, we're in a tough spot right now.
So who's the common fireworks companies? It's not JPI, right?
It's Pyrotechnico.
But I also don't wanna go spend fifty thousand dollars. All right, you know what, a new second provider.
I say we put thirty, we put it out there and let.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try, if you guys are okay, I'm gonna make a couple calls to somebody, I'm just gonna go ask them.
Sure.
Okay, all right, good.
Well, we still gotta have the number for that.
Certainly.
I think there, I think thirty is enough.
And they gotta have a barge, but thirty isn't just, so thirty, if you're saying it's just paying for the fireworks, what about, we have residuals, something to pay for, or bodies?
No, I think thirty was the number.
Thirty total, but twenty-eight for the fireworks.
Yeah, I have a willingness for a barge to be provided. It's a matter of finding a company to shoot off of it.
With, what, does it have the right top to it?
What do you mean the right top?
So they can't be wooden, or you have to put, yeah, yeah.
Great way, they're wooden.
That's, yeah.
And it's big enough, yeah.
I'd say that'd have to be, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make some calls.
And you'll have answers for before the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. So thirty total, but twenty-eight for the show.
Technical, I'm gonna go back on two points.
We, we did have our, we did at the barges, but we, we just got rid of them.
That's a logistical nightmare.
It was awful. Um, Article Four, major capital reserves, um, these numbers that are in there were from the CIP. Obviously, those are, I went through the CIP report and those have, would change depending on what we do, obviously with the fire equipment. And then highway equipment, CIP put a hundred and eighty, police vehicle, CIP put seventy-seven, and then they did town building maintenance at ten. So.
We can have it see what.
Town building maintenance is going to be.
Do we know what, uh, there, are you doing balances on there?
I have, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, so highways is pretty low.
Yeah, 'cause we just bought a truck that's over two hundred grand last year, and.
So highways will be, when you, when you say estimated twenty, twenty-five balance, that'll be January one this year, that's what the balance is gonna be.
Oh, I've heard to put one on here. Um, yeah, 'cause we haven't paid them yet. Um, fire departments is gonna change, so highway equipment as of, is, is currently at the end of twenty-nine thousand. But we have to put in, um, I think it was a hundred and sixty.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so we haven't paid that yet, though, so.
And they've got a backhoe purchase coming up?
No, they have another truck.
What's that?
They have a truck purchase coming up, I think. Backhoe's not for, I'd have to look and see.
Yeah.
Let me pull that up. I think the backhoe is a little bit further out, but.
The backhoe seems to be the most concerning purchase, so why aren't we moving that up? 'Cause we have extra trucks sitting down there.
Um, let me find this new website, makes me a little bit.
That's what Victor said for the CIP, when he thought it could be. So how, when he wanted it replaced, so, well, so how old is the case that the water department has?
Older.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one's coming up, there it is.
What is?
I think Jeff said that, right? Jeff said that one's coming up?
I guess all I'm getting at is.
We don't want, so water department isn't on the CIP, but I think.
Does everybody need a backhoe?
Highway, let's see.
Water, so they pick one off there and use it for.
They need a backhoe.
Yeah, they do.
And.
So they're supposed to be doing, according to CIP, this year, okay, we're not doing it.
Everybody needs a piece of what?
When they have emergencies, they get a pump up and they have.
No, we didn't, it's the F-50 truck that says.
I mean, it's all, it all.
That's the next one to do up.
It says this year, though, twenty twenty-five on CIP. Oh, this is, then right, CIP isn't posted.
Yeah. I.
Hang on, I'll get it.
I've looked at it a long time, so I'm not sure what's what right now.
Uh, just stop.
It's not something I memorize.
That's right, and the wrong, put the wrong ones, I'm gonna say, so sorry, we'll fix that, but, um, let me choose.
No, I was gonna say, we can, we're gonna change these numbers later, so. Are we gonna set them now, the whole point in that?
Uh, sorry, so I'll get there. Um, come on, make it bigger. So for twenty twenty-six, it's supposed to be, oh, it is the backhoe, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, it says.
Okay.
So it is the backhoe, but we also have a hundred and eighty going into the capital reserve, so.
Okay, so, so, all right, I may be the contrarian for a second. I'm gonna find, everybody finds that shocking. Um, okay, so we got, I'm not saying it's convenient by any stretch of the imagination, okay? But we're, we just finished having a whole conversation about all the funds that the fire department needs, okay? If there is a mechanism by which we can figure out where we have a combination of renting and sharing a single backhoe for those two departments, does that give us any grace?
Three, transfer station also, forgot code.
Okay, so, does that give us any grace towards the fire department? Like, like if we had to make a choice, what would we do? And I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's an easy choice, I'm saying.
There could be conflicts, uh, because if something, if there's a watering break and just gotta dig up the road and highway has a project going on, it, they could conflict. Well, does that always happen? Not necessarily, but we've had four breaks in the past. Four breaks in the past in less than a month. And the highway department was only able to be there to assist on two of them. But, so I don't know. Transfer station, also, the conversation then when we replace the backhoe, the old backhoe would go to the transfer station to use.
So it's not.
It's got a truck, that one's there.
It is the backhoe, sorry, Rob.
All right, good. The cheapest new John Deere backhoe is a hundred, a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's a hundred and twenty-five, but we are, so we're putting a hundred and eighty.
That's the cheapest, that's.
What's that, a three-ten?
Sixty-eight, it's a, yeah, it's a three-ten.
Yeah, so a three-ten, right? So, so, so I guess this, well, this is all I'm saying, right, like right now, and, and when we get to the head of the conversation about the friggin' radios, everybody's operating in a bloody silo. We are a town of three thousand year-round residents. I, I, I don't know, there is definitely coming, at least from my perspective, we have a, we have a, we gotta figure out where we can have economies of scale. I'm not saying it's easy to do, and I'm not saying we can have it everywhere, but like, it's radios. Everybody's got a backhoe. We got truck needs coming out of otherwise, too, we got three ambulances. We, I mean, we've got the new building that we're still trying to pay off. Our overall debt load, I don't, I have, what's our percentage of debt to our income? You know what I mean, like, like?
We don't have our debt ratio yet, so we won't do that.
Anyways.
Because you have new values, I won't have the right ratio, but.
It's actually not too bad.
I don't, uh, my concern is you're gonna, you have a ban, a tan, you have a USDA bond coming, you have a public safety building gone. I don't know what our new debt number is going to be, I'm just concerned about how close we're getting.
And, and overall, like, every one of the things is appropriately talking about them in a vacuum, by themselves. It's, it's the culmination, anyway, sorry.
So it's a hundred and twenty-five for a backhoe next year, and then it's two hundred thousand for the F-50 truck to, the following year. So if you didn't put any money in the capital reserve, you could pay for the backhoe out of the capital reserve by the end of this year.
But, but Sean, as Sean just pointed out.
You can.
It's a hundred and forty-six thousand, not a hundred and twenty-five.
Right, but it's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand at the end of this year in the capital reserve. So you've got enough to pay for the backhoe in the, out of the capital reserve, you just don't have it for the following year, for a truck.
The financial useful life of a backhoe, how long do we keep them?
This one says.
Fifteen years on the team.
Oh, that's, I have nine on here.
That's it, right?
Yeah, it says nine on the CIP.
Should, that's pretty, that's pretty young.
When we toured with the highway department, with Victor, was saying how his team has been adding life to their in-house. Equipment, well, doing in-house repairs. So, I mean, I'm not saying that they're not, again, everybody, straight up, everybody's trying to do what they consider to be the right things, right? Like, this is not somebody not doing something, it's just that balancing act of all this stuff, 'cause it's all coming to fruition at once. Well, it's kinda spaced out, it's all planned out, it's in the.
Well, you'd thank the federal government for the increase in costs, too, 'cause all the regulation, emissions, some fire department, that FPA, it's just, that's made the cost of all these things skyrocket.
I know, they, and even the clothing, the requirement for clothing.
Yeah, same.
So you don't have to decide on these numbers tonight. I will have an updated number for the assessment capital reserve. We've been putting twenty-five to thirty, we're going to have to put more. Cost of a revow is, is, obviously, the contract you just signed tonight is up. So over the next, we only have the eight thousand dollars at the end of this year, so.
When is Joy coming back, the rest of the short-term rent and stuff?
It's, I just sent it to the attorney, while we're in the attorney. So hopefully, December eighteenth, not sure.
Wait, what, five thousand a year on that?
Oh. Whatever gets it done, that way we, you know, becomes a, a, a revenue thing attached to the town.
Do you have any questions on these capital reserves? I can tell you, um, the town building maintenance will, oops, where am I? Wrong one.
Is there any reason the PD can't go over here without a, for sure?
I think they're due, that's a question. Um, the PD is supposed to replace.
Yeah, why have we signed up on the pickup truck?
One this year, which is the pickup truck.
K-nine, yeah.
Yep.
And next year, they're supposed to replace, yeah.
Is it?
But they had to send it for, for some time.
Oh, it's here?
It's gone, I think it's gone again.
It was at the thing for, um, the public chief, yeah.
The parade, I think it's going again, though. Um, I think it's not completely outfitted.
It's gotta go around for.
Yeah. Um, he'll be in next, I will be inviting him to the next meeting, 'cause there's a talk about radios, but radios on this doesn't say if it's supposed to be replaced yet. Um, what he, when I asked him how much it would cost, he said about a hundred, and I'm like, well, there's a lot on this warrant right now, can you, we talked about Ben's option, where he did it over three years with the lease, which was like thirty thousand a year, which was much better.
Yeah.
And, and then they would all be on the same radio.
Their radios need to be replaced already?
That's what he was saying, but according to this, this says, oops, nevermind, I was looking at the wrong radios. So their radios aren't even on CIP.
Just another example of, we're not, we're not even leveraging stuff ourselves, never mind, you know, we talked about, maybe some of the answers to things are regional. Forget regional for a second. We can't even seem to, right now, work across departments to go, okay, we have, these are areas where we have similar needs. So forget regionalization, like, we should be able to, we should be able to sort of enforce there's going to be a level of communication inside Bristol around.
Do we, do we have a quote for radios?
No, not yet, people have.
Between apartments.
There better be one for examples.
Motorola on there, too. One contract.
I can.
We should have one radio contract, like.
Agreed.
Like, there's no bloody reason.
Which is usually, well, right now, it's usually Austin Mountain.
Right, that's a provider.
The provider.
Yeah.
Because they do, do us really good.
'Cause I know when we, when the fire department got the radios, it was almost twice as expensive to go to Motorola.
Yeah, the Motorola used to be, I mean, I, I had, I used to have to manage them.
There's absolutely nothing wrong with the Kenwoods, that.
You know, I, yeah, whatever we gotta do.
Town building maintenance fund is right now gonna be down to fifty-five, it is going to drop more. Um, but, uh, so we usually keep it, what, around fifty down?
Fifty.
So I think ten should be sufficient.
Yeah.
Knock on wood. Um, Beach Street change project, we, um, we will get our P's are coming, the bids are coming in next Friday, so we'll have them to you for the eighteenth. The original estimate from the contract, Mike McNally, was a hundred and ten. That doesn't include contractor costs, so we'll know, um, more at the next meeting for you.
So there's two hundred, right?
What?
So there's another two hundred.
Um, the Article Six is the lib, when I met with the librarian, I told her that she should break these off into two articles and not one. Um, I, and so we broke them. Um, the Article Six is forty-seven, three fifty-nine for the purpose of renovating and building cover over the emergency exit stairs. I have fixed the wording there, um, um, out of the children's room. Um, they are not doing the side exit now, it's being relocated, but this is the, um, children's room, emergency exit. Um, so that's the cost, she's gotten the quote, um, they were, and they were giving me the updated numbers, so. Um, and then Article Seven was the fifteen thousand dollars for the preparation and painting of the trim on just the original building section, they decided to do it in two stages, because the original building section is the worst condition, yeah.
So back to Article Six for a second, we.
Yep.
We, there's no quote in there.
No, I have it, you wanna?
I have to see.
Here.
We're not recommending, we're not recommending, but just to have it available when we do.
This is the one that they kept. I have the other one, too. Um, there's something that I also. I will wait on that. Actually, this is, uh, read. Maybe we're near about there. I've already had the attorney look at the wording, 'cause that was a read, I'm not even sure it was cracked.
That's crazy. Yeah, that's pretty much what we.
Right, but they're doing this, and we're supposed to. We're supposed to be on when we can.
We're supposed to be what?
I'll pass that around. Um, we're supposed to make the decision. But I also did double check, um, they, we do the voting on whether we support their, the request or not.
Well, we can, we can put it on or not put it on.
Correct. Correct.
Right. So if we put it on, it's us doing it.
But we should probably, based on that, start putting them into our town building maintenance.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I would agree.
Did you read it?
I am.
Oh, boy.
Well, we're just processing what you guys are saying, we should put it in our town building maintenance.
Not the, not this project, we can't.
No, no, but, but, I, I understand what you're saying.
We should be doing that anyways.
We, we should be, but we don't actually get to talk about how it gets maintained.
We do.
How, do we? Because I thought.
Read that. Read the first page.
We're the star.
The star, yeah.
Okay, but I was looking, all right. I'm calling it right.
Okay, oh, 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 all right.
Um, Article, while we're going on, any other questions on their, on their, on their, those two warrant articles?
Go for the better.
I hope you feel better. Article eight, possible energy committee article, um, Joy and, Joy and I talked about it in meetings. She's meeting with law maintenance next week, so we'll have more information at the December eighteenth meeting on that. I'm still really complaining about the word.
Sean's going, don't give me the cooties.
Feel better? Um, and, and then Article nine is still the thirty thousand auto loan through D E S. Um, we won't do anything until late.
Yeah.
But, um, Article ten, I started to do the wording and got sidetracked. It's the twenty-five hundred dollars for the service connected to a permanent disability. Article nine, social districts actually have to move, they have to be on your ballot.
Oh, really?
And we have to hold a public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
So we have to hold a public.
They have to be on the board.
Yes, they have to be on the ballot, the, um, so.
Oh, it has to be on the ballot.
On the ballot, and the wording on the ballot is, shall we allow the operation of social districts within the town or city? That's all you put on your ballot. Has to be voted there, but we have to hold a public hearing on the question fifteen, at least fifteen days, but not more than thirty days before the town meeting.
Yeah.
So I'll figure that out, and put it on if that's what we're doing. We do not have to make decisions on where the social districts are currently, because there's a whole other steps once you get it voted on.
Okay, that's just to allow us to set them up.
Yes, and then there's a lot of steps for us. So we have to write a policy, require, um, we have to write, so establish management and maintenance plans for the social district and post these plans along with the rendering of the boundaries. You also have, I have to clarify, of those, I don't think they have to be done, I think you just put the vote on and you can tell people where you're thinking about them.
Right.
But all of this stuff would have to be done after. And if it gets voted, usually, if it's no means no, this says if it, if it fails the ballot, you can still come back again and put it again.
Tell them to get a quote from the local contractor.
I think they try. But, does it mean that?
I don't know why we have C C I involved in a.
No would be my vote on that right now.
Yeah, no, twenty thousand dollar, thirty thousand dollar project.
Yeah.
Well, then, oh, no, I, oh, stop. So, so.
Absolutely no.
So a social district is moving to the ballot.
I thought it seemed like a lot of money for that.
Where is, I don't think. This is all their original quotes, but painting is in this, so you're welcome to look through this mess. Um, that's painting, I think, maybe these are just painted, painting. No, these are painting and shoveling, sorry. Um, okay, so I'm moving social statistics to the ballot. Article twelve depends on what we do with the fire department. Um, Article thirteen is the tentative police department, um, he'll be in the next meeting to talk to you about it. And then this, the last one is exemptions, um, Jo, in your folders under, also under number four. The first exemptions and credits tells you what the town currently has, um, the number of them. Um, the memo from assessing, um, is the one you probably want to look at. There's also the Grafton County exemptions, that tells you what all of this Grafton County gives for exemptions and credits right now. All right?
Um, it's still.
Oh, so Joy and did a little draw, uh, draw up credits and exemptions, but, um, I think we were gonna skip the veterans, doesn't mean we have to, you can certainly take a look at those. What we were more concerned about were the elderly currently. Um, and so she's recommending, um, a proposed change to go up ten thousand, um, sixty-five to seventy-four, to go, and I'll have her come to the next meeting to explain that a little bit more, go ahead.
Back to the comparison thing. What other communities of our size have, like, for, for exemption amounts?
It's all over the board.
It's all over the place.
Canton has two hundred thousand dollar exemption for eighty-plus.
I mean, Grafton, Grafton has, this is, I'm just using it because it's a small town. They start at twenty thousand, then they go to thirty-five, and then they go to fifty. They're, they have more than us on the two top tiers.
Yeah.
Because our top tier currently is forty-five.
When you look at, it seems like we're, we're higher than most for the standard veterans and the all-veterans.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, when, and we're lower than, I'd say we're lower than most, uh, on the elderly exemptions.
I think we are, yeah.
Some, some, some towns are out high, it's like, you know, Land Ave does five thousand, five thousand, five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, I think there's probably eight hundred people in Land Ave.
But you like to look at Sunapee, so.
Yeah, but that's not.
It's not even on.
That's not Grafton County.
Yep, this is just Grafton County.
Yeah. Um, Plymouth does thirty-five, forty-five, fifty-five.
Bridgewater is twenty, thirty, and forty.
Yeah, because all, all their rural people are rich.
Thorin does fifty-six, seventy-seven, and ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Old account.
Hmm, Linky does a hundred and twenty-five on the eighty-plus. I mean, it seems to me like you'd go up ten across the board there and still be.
She had them going up a little, um, so it was ten, the next one would be going up twenty-five, and then the last one goes up more. So whether those are the right thing to do or not.
Her recommendation's thirty-five, fifty-five, and what?
Seventy-five. And her recommendation is to do the same across, um, for disabled and deaf.
So this is really interesting, so, uh, so Hanover does a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Really?
For eighty-plus. Lebanon, two ninety. Line, three twenty.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I'm, I'm not.
Their, their pickings are probably very, very high.
Very, very bad, yeah. Especially mine.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I'm not here, I, I, I just want us to be current, you know what I mean, like, somewhere in the middle, so that we're being appropriate to the residents.
What did she say? Um, when I talked to her, we hadn't done these since.
She has days of this.
Where, where is it? I was looking for it.
Uh, the veterans are twenty, twenty-four.
Yep.
Uh, spouse, surviving spouse is two thousand four, elderly, two thousand seven.
Yep, all of them.
All the other ones are two thousand seven, deaf, we did two thousand nine.
So we haven't done them in.
Twenty years.
Close to twenty years, so.
Yeah, it totally seems like the right thing to do, I just don't want it to be arbitrary, like, I kind of want it to be, okay, you know, we've looked at a comparison, we land here, you know.
I think you look at like, right, Hampton, that's a huge bump for eighty-plus. They go from sixty to two hundred. But.
Figured by eighty, you're starting to run out of money.
Size-wise, what are we, we're looking like, right, like Canaan, Fulton.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, Canaan, sixty-five, seventy-five, and a hundred. Then, yep.
They seem like, they seem like reasonable suggestions that she has.
So when you get disabled and deaf, we don't, oh, Bristol is one of the, one of only two towns in Bafden County that does the deaf.
Yep.
Credit.
And, and obviously, that's a, that's a credit against your valuations, that works.
Yeah. So if you're a hundred thousand dollar property and you're in the sixty-five bracket, you get thirty-five thousand off the value, and then your tax is assessed.
Right, or, or you can look at it and go, if our taxes were, if our tax, it's not, if our tax rate was, was, was ten dollars, then it would be, you know, three hundred and thirty-five, you know, it would basically be a, a, a three thousand dollar break, right, on the lower end.
They get it half and half, so they get half in this, in the spring bill and half in the fall bill.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to me.
Is there anything you wanted to look at differently, and I can have her come back to the next meeting, or are you comfortable with those numbers, or do you want to see them adjusted at all? And then you're comfortable with all three changes? Four changes.
So based on what Sean was saying, it seems, it seems to be that we're somewhere in the middle when it comes to these changes.
Yeah, it's just the two, two of the veteran, the veterans, they're giving veterans all, we're not changing them.
And the, the one of these, you can't apply for some, um, so.
You can't apply for all.
You can't apply, you can apply for some of them together, but you're elderly and disabled, you can't. So whichever one's higher, but putting them at the same is probably better.
It's less confusing.
And this other document tells us how many people have applied for them.
Um, that's how many we currently have. Well, the num, the number and how much it's costing currently.
Right, so there's twenty-three in charitable costing us fourteen million dollars.
Well, that charitable is a, because we exempt the whole property. Charitable is probably, trying to, I can't think of.
So that's mid-state.
So let's, uh.
That's mid-state, yep.
Schools.
Well, let's be clear.
Church.
Um, the veterans credits, those are credits off of your tax credit.
Correct.
Everything else is an exemption from the.
From the, from your.
Basically, deduction from your, you know.
Your valuation.
From valuation, correct.
Correct.
Right, so things that are marked charitable, the valuation from a town perspective is zero.
On charitable and also on religious.
Right.
Yep. And then.
Which needs to change. I, I, listen, I agree. I mean, basically, so.
It's statutory, but.
Oh, I know, it needs to change.
Needs to change, though.
And I, you know, let me just look at the charitable one for a second, right? Again, if you did fourteen million dollars. Like, I thought we'd, this may be an action for next year to kind of look at, okay, what's the process for making sure it's appropriate? Again, they're doing charitable work.
It's, there's a list, there's an R S A with a list.
Yeah.
Yeah, so with this charitable, we did their financials.
Yeah.
Mid-state, how is the one that's been questionable, but we also decided not to, to go against it because there was a court case.
Yeah, court case of them. And, and they lost because they went too far the other way.
Right.
All, and, and, and it's really because we've allowed everybody to sort of play in the margins and go on, because you provide some charitable work.
Yep.
You are saying you are completely exempt from taxes, and all that happens is, is that gets then transferred to everybody here in town.
But you've got, they can.
So if they're taking in revenues, we're probably gonna figure out a better way to balance that, because I guess we'll get that, like.
Some of it you can't balance, some of it you can. It depends on the statute. Um, there are certain things you can't.
So then people in Bristol should be able to go to mid-state and get, you know what I'm saying, like, like, that's, that's what I'm saying, so we're subsid, the town is subsidizing that operation.
But don't you understand, we're a better town for having them here, as they're. And in some cases, that's true.
I think wrongs getting rumpier and rumpier as we talk.
Actually, it was both.
Something like mid-state, we should probably do.
All I'm saying is, I, I agree, there are definitely folks in town that are benefiting from that, and, and, and I'm not looking to take that away, all I'm saying is, is it's operations like that is not all or nothing, because it's not their.
Well, you can have a nonprofit, like, for example, you know, Slim Baker, that basically just struggles to, to be there.
To make zero money.
Exactly. Uh, or, or actually puts everything that they do make into programming and, and property. Uh, then you have, you know, a nonprofit that's a twenty million dollar entity, you know.
Business.
Yeah.
That, that's what I'm getting.
We have Manhew, we have Upward Bound.
Yep.
I wanna, just because something is difficult to go after.
That's a mystery to me.
I know.
Just because it's difficult to go after, that doesn't mean we should avoid it, like, it means we need to be thoughtful about how we go about it, and go, okay, this balance here, that's all. Because every time we allow the entire thing to be exempt, that means everybody else pays.
And I don't know, oh, they're not counted here, sorry. We also have, uh, we also have a property that applies for a discount on low to moderate income housing, so they get a discount on their taxes. Um, and then we also have a payment in lieu of taxes on a, uh, elderly housing.
That's a concern.
Property, yeah, and then the solar, so those give us, so their valuation doesn't come into effect, they pay ten percent of their sho, uh, shelter and other income, or, I can't remember which two, they only pay two of the tax rates, they don't pay all four, so whichever one's cheaper. So the cheaper is always the shelter income, so, shelter and other income. And that's statutory.
For charitable and religious, which we were just talking about, the count and the owners are different, being like, there's six religious properties, but there's only four owners, and there's twenty-three charitables, but only eight owners.
Right, because if you look at a property like Manhew, they own multiple, uh, multiple parcels. Or, and religious.
The school has two.
The church owns two properties, because there's, um, uh, Saint Timothy's, Roman Catholic bishop, I mean, they own two, but that they're, because they're split by the.
Right.
And the, the school's not on here, though.
I can tell this, Upward Bound is basically an Airbnb.
What, Upward Bound?
Yeah.
Upward Bound, we've developed them.
Yeah.
They have, and they have three properties.
How does that benefit the school members of this community?
Which one?
Any of them, that's, but my first question, when you see something that we're allowing a charitable exemption from, is how does it develop, how, how does it, um, benefit members of this community?
That's correct. And if, and if it is a hundred percent benefit, then awesome.
Yeah.
Then it's totally worth it, if it's a, a, a for-profit business that does a portion of their stuff that's in that realm, then we need to apportion it appropriately.
Yeah, but there is, there is an R S A with listed charities that, that you, you give them charitable.
Right.
Doesn't mean it's right. No, but sometimes it's hard to get on that list.
Do you read all your kisses?
I do.
I'm saving mine, I have one in my peanut butter.
Oh, I don't care. Oh, I got the, I had the peanut butter.
So, anyway, we knew very shortly what they did, like.
I can't believe this is what the serving says. All right, um, we're going with this.
Okay.
We're good for it.
So, I, that's, I think that's it for a warrant article, so we'll clean. That's, I think that's it for Warren Articles, we'll clean this up, um, depending, um, I will have Joanne at your next meeting, probably to talk about the energy committee um, recommendation, on whether, of what we found out about whether, the workload that we would have to do, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Other than that, Ben should be here at your next meeting, the Flee Sheep will be at your next meeting on Warren Articles. And Joanne, um, do you want anyone else to come on Warren Articles?
No.
No.
Okay, you're good?
Sure.
I just, I can, revenue discussion. Uh, I just wanted to double check with you, one, um, I did confirm that, two things, I, I've been able to confirm, I haven't confirmed the third yet. But I did confirm that on, like, for instance, the ambulance reserves, we shouldn't be counting the sixty thousand in our revenues here to offset our, because these revenues we count offset our taxes. So, because we're putting the sixty thousand into another fund, we shouldn't be counting that here. Same thing with the revolving fund for the transfer station, because those go into a fund and they're not truly cash that we're spending to offset taxes. Because we can't just take that money out to pay ta, pay our bills, we only can take it out for specific purposes.
So in this, we have sale of municipal property?
So that's the one I wanted to talk to you about again, but go ahead.
Yeah, we budgeted for two hundred thousand, but I don't see that.
Um, so if you know what's, um, the new isn't done completely yet, um, where are we?
What, why is that?
I'm still talking about estimated, because I'm gonna have to do this with the tax rate. Where are we? Sale of town property, all the way here, so we budgeted for twenty twenty-five, only two hundred thousand. I'm, I'm gonna probably take the two hundred out, because I don't know if we're gonna be able to get to sell South Main Street yet. Um, we may have some hoops to go through with South Main Street before we can sell it. But, so the two hundred thousand for twenty twenty-five, we took in the five hundred and sixty.
Right, great.
My con, and I brought this concern up at your last meeting. My concern is that we're not building back up our fund balance. And if we claim the full five hundred and sixty to offset taxes, we're not building back up our fund balance anymore. Or very, not as much as we thought we needed to do.
No. That, that discussion is when we set the tax rate.
Right.
No, this is, this applies to your tax rate, whatever we say is in the tooth, that, whatever we claim on the estimated revenues, which is what I'm claiming, because I have to have that in before you set your tax rate.
You don't use claimed, or you don't use estimates.
Yes, we do at first, and then, we have to submit estimates first, and then we go back and calculate out what we think the rest of the year will be. And we, when we talk to the DRA, we tell them what to change the number to upstairs, and then we come to you with the tax rate. So before I finalize those numbers with the DRA, I need, I wanna make sure what number I should be using here.
We took it in.
We took it in, but we don't have to claim it all, it could, it to, to, as a revenue on, in the tax rate setting.
I'm confused about that.
What's that?
I said I'm confused about that.
I'm confused on all things, what do we, what do we do, last year we didn't claim it, right?
So last year, we didn't say we were getting any money, we didn't last year.
Right, and we used five hundred out of the, so.
Out of the fund balance, right?
Right.
So whatever we say to the, to the DRA to put into our estimated revenues, which is that four thirty-four document we have to do, it's estimated to start off, that offsets, so if we say, let me just go back, say, if we say we took, we are having four million dollars worth of revenues, that goes into the calculations for the tax rate. So my question is, do you want that full five hundred included in that number that I'm gonna give them?
I see what you're saying.
See what I mean?
So if we claim.
We're still gonna report it.
If we claim, for, for that, for that purpose, if we claimed three hundred thousand, then we could put two hundred and twenty in, yeah, a hundred thousand now.
Well, when, when it's reconciled.
Yes.
We'll end up with two hundred.
So we're still gonna show this on our reporting here, but on the four thirty-four, we're only going, we would only say, whatever, two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand on that number, which is used to, say, for your tax rate.
Well, I mean, it's all the same tale, though, because.
Yeah.
The revenue, the revenue either show, you claim the revenue and then, okay, well, we, we might not, might not use the full two twenty.
Right.
Right, so, okay, so you might be able to. But I say, the whole reason to sell that was to put it against the taxes.
Right, but you, you did it last year.
Yeah, so. In anticipation of getting the.
But this goes against it again this year.
Right.
So we just have to consider that when we're setting it.
When we said full five hundred thousand?
We did, didn't we?
No, I thought I was pushing you.
But we still.
We didn't.
No, but, no, because they wanted six fifty, and I talked, we had Dawn and I talked to guys.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what I heard, yeah, I wanted that plus.
But.
Yeah.
But.
Sorry, Dawn, go ahead.
For this year's sake, put, we put the five hundred in, because that's what we got, and that's, and when we're setting the tax rate, we just have to realize that we have already used that, so we're not gonna be pulling as much out of the general fund to offset the tax rate. That's, that's where that part should come in, in that discussion.
I agree, I think.
We should put the five hundred and fifty-five, five fifty-five in the actual, in the estimate, because that's what it is. I don't like, I don't like adjusting estimates to.
Therefore, it's all going, it's all going against our taxes.
It's going against twice, kind of, if you think about it.
Yeah, no, I get that, but.
The, the reasoning is going in twice.
Right, but you're right, this is only going into this year, but the, behind this.
So we keep in mind this year when we're setting the tax rate, that we need to, we need to.
We can't use six hundred thousand dollars.
Right, we need to, we need to, to build up the, the unreserved balance, we can't.
Well, we can, we can bring it to zero.
We can, but, but remember again.
We're not Canaan.
In order to have your fund, you need two and a half months of bills in your fund balance to, to help you not have to borrow money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have nowhere near that. We need, it was like, two, just over, it was two point something million we would need in a quick estimate, so.
But we actually need to cash, like, in order to actually have this conversation be meaningful, we need a cash flow. Like, we need to, we need to be able to say, this is what it comes in, this is roughly how much it is, and this monthly run rate is.
Right, which I did do that, but I did it in, by hand.
Okay.
Because, so, yeah, but we do, we will have.
So what's, what's our monthly outlay? So the monthly outlay then is how much?
Well, when we did it, it was a quick estimate, about two, 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 well, no, about a million, just over a million.
So, so a million, million, because you said two and two and a half, right, so that's a million, so for, for a couple of months, so that's a million and a, a million and a quarter. So one point two five is what we spend every month.
Not all months, no.
So, because of, because of, this is where I'm going, if we have a ten million dollar budget, divide by twelve, like, I'm literally just trying to take the, the overall number and then I'm dividing it by twelve and going, this is what it is monthly. And then in order for me to get to the fund balance.
But don't forget the Warren Articles, those aren't in your ten million dollar number.
That is true. So even at a million dollars.
Ten million is the operating budget, that includes sewer.
Those water and sewer, yeah.
Water and sewer, you can't really go by that.
But you do include water and sewer in your revenue numbers, too.
Right, right, which drives me crazy.
Yeah.
But even at a million a month, even at a million a month, that's twelve million a year. Right?
Yeah.
That, that checks out, John.
Thanks, so. Right, but, but if you need two months, that's two million dollars on two and a half. So all I'm saying is, is, like, I fundamentally agree with you, but I'm just, I'm trying to get to where the number coming from.
Yeah.
Because I don't know, like, the more we talk about it, where we have the exception of water and sewer and these other pieces, I still, I think it's less, I think it's more like eight fifty or nine hundred.
That's what, that's what we've had, and we still have to borrow.
But then we gotta go look at the cash flow, like, who's been taking it, I, I, so.
Yeah. And your fund balance, by the way, isn't just cash on hand.
It's not.
Dawn and I have been talking, telling me to mention that, yeah, so that's the other thing to keep in mind. Uh, I would like to invite the auditors to explain fund balance to the board, if the board would, um.
I love that, actually.
Alright, so, uh, we had to provide one more document from the library, so we should be closing audit finally. But I'm gonna ask, uh, Plaza to come in and explain fund balance. I got the idea from another town that I talked to, that it did the same thing.
Yeah, I understand it, but.
You do, yeah.
But I can't teach it. I can't teach it to a class.
That's fine, but, alright, so let's just say it was a million dollar a month.
New Hampton had their, um, that's where I got the idea from, New Hampton had their auditors come in and explain the fund balance to the select board, because, um, she was having some of the same concerns, she couldn't, she knew it and understood it, but she couldn't explain it well enough, so, um, and so they, they did have come in and talk to them.
Yeah, so, back to, uh, credits and charitable organizations. I looked it up on the New Hampshire Web, uh, Registered Charities under the Department of Justice, for some reason. In, under Attorney General, and as of, should be, that's correct. As of, as of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, Upward Bound Youth Development Corporation is not in good standing. So we may want to, uh, look at that, yeah.
Yeah, because the, um, those properties were like, I remember correctly, there are three, and their taxes were, one of them was at least three thousand dollars.
Department of State, you said it's not in good standing?
Are you at the Attorney General's?
Yeah, it's, it's actually under the Department of Justice, ju, just look up New Hampshire charitable, uh, charitable, um,
Okay.
Organizations and the state has a list of good standing, whether they're in good standing.
I don't know if that's the same as, you know, field of business, which you should probably know, you have to do your annual report.
Yeah.
To stay in good standing.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I don't know if that's similar to that, or.
It is, because it talks about, you know, at, at that point, they were at least six months behind their annual report in twenty-three, yeah.
Okay.
This isn't.
What, go ahead.
Sean is going, going down the road. This isn't the same, there's a federal program called Upward Bound.
Right.
It's not the same thing.
Yeah.
It's Upward Bound Youth Development, isn't it, with the?
Yeah, I see that.
It's on Bristol Hill.
Yeah, three properties.
It's like an Airbnb to me.
Yeah, it does, with our advertising.
Okay, um, for next year's revenues, I'll have those moving to next year and two, if you'd be willing to start to look at those.
Yeah.
Um, this document, do you not look at right now, because it's not fully updated? But Ben's numbers are correct, if you want, he said he put them in, so if you wanted to look at those, you can. So the three, four oh one, um, ambulance patient receipts, he's got, he left it at four fifty, and then for ambulance member fees, it's, it's going from, uh, this year's four eighty-one to seven oh four. So you, you'd wanted to see that number because you were concerned that we could, we offset the two hundred and fifty-four times two technically, um, number, and it does, so. Ben's numbers are correct, um, Chuck's numbers we just put in, um, we are, we took out the recycling NRA, because that was all, um, cardboard. I did find some things that were booked wrong, and we fixed those, and then, um.
Excuse me.
The other thing we took out was the aluminum, recycling aluminum. And then we corrected the hauling, um, the hauling is just, right now, that's the fee for a human. They're, they, they pay.
Yeah.
So. But some of these other numbers still need to be updated, just numbers will need to be updated, but we usually can't get those till, so we usually just put it, can't get those until we get closer to.
The owners of that taxed exempt property live on, live in Oak Bluffs, on Martha's Vineyard.
Yeah.
That's one we should look into, I think.
Anything else jump at you? Okay. You're all down the same rabbit hole.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, next.
Um, job description update. So the HR, when I went back to look at advertising, the job description had never been updated. My recommendation is to keep HR and welfare as two separate job descriptions, welfare didn't need to be updated, but I put an edited version on, in your folders for the HR. Um, I took out the finance assistant things, the only thing I left in there, let me go. For under financial stuff was to back up the finance office.
What would cost us to contract dot HR?
We looked up, um, bamboo. Um, Harper's can do some of it, too, and I can probably find out their cost, but it was, they aren't available all the time, usually, and they're not available immediately, it's, um, but when we looked at bamboo, I can't remember the quote now. Let's see if I can.
When you say not available all the time, you mean?
They have, but, um, so I think when Harper's talked to us, they talked about specific timeframes that they would be available.
Like during the week?
Yeah, um, and then, I can't, bamboo, you'd have to put in a.
Didn't realize we had HR emergencies.
Um, we do, we can, we do sometimes, and we have a lot of onboarding paperwork that has to be filed when we hire a physician.
Yeah, for, for sure, but all of that, like, so, uh, so what would be a good HR emergency?
Somebody going out on short-term disability that has to put their paperwork in, could be, could be, there is a major issue that, um, happens during the day and I need to pull HR in, because we're, we had that issue with, um, a former water and sewer.
Okay.
And that took some time off.
But nothing that couldn't wait until the next day.
I, I, I would be surprised, I would be surprised if we couldn't figure out a contract that accounts for that in the number of times that that's needed to happen with the town, rightly.
So we wouldn't have.
It might be, it might be, it might be worth asking the question.
We wouldn't have somebody in-house at all available. Which means, we'd still need somebody in-house to deal with the paperwork portion of it. They're not gonna file our paperwork with Health Trust. Or pay the, or pay the insurance bill, or, or reconcile the insurance bill. Or do payroll. But we could, we'd have to move payroll to finance.
But some of the, some of the tasks you're talking about aren't really an HR job.
You guys had me move them to HR.
We have a, we have a combined HR.
Yeah, yeah, all I'm saying is, some of those things, so it may be worth, it may be worth sort of investigating, to your point, like, okay, you know, how can we be creative?
Any of those things, things that Shannon did retreat to do?
We just added a transfer station to her. And she's already doing invoicing for, um, finance, and she also, is does all the minutes for cemetery, budget committee, select board. So, I don't know, I just think it would be overwhelming. So, I don't know. I just think it would be overwhelming.
What would we be looking at cost-wise? Any idea?
For?
To do, to contract out HR services.
Let's see if I can get bamboo out. It's an hour, am I right?
Cannot believe this, this Excel work sheet got four hundred and seventeen pages of registered charities.
Who's, whose spreadsheet is that?
Uh, the state one.
The state?
Yeah.
I have to check, because, um, just the search I did, you've got ADP coming up when I asked you HR, there, because they do payroll.
Yep.
So, but they only do payroll. And they might do, you can do some, like, we're gonna switch our onboarding into Harper's, which is a digital system, but it requires somebody who will send it out. Um, when you hire someone.
So I guess that, like, that kind of leads me to, like, what would be beneficial to contract out payroll?
Well, we do contract out payroll, but we still need somebody in-house to book over, but they, right now, what Ruby's been trained to do is go in and, um, she has to go in and go through the system, verify everybody's got the right things, and submit it. And then when it comes back in, she does the GL creation, and we post it to the journals. Boom. So, eight Harper's is, is doing payroll through the system.
I mean, if it's a matter of saving ten thousand dollars a year, it's not worth it, but if we're talking about saving sixty or seventy thousand dollars a year, then there's a conversation yet.
Right.
You think it's gonna come down to defining the functions?
Yeah. Jason, I'm admittedly ignorant in not knowing that, but it's not my area of expertise, certainly.
So I understand, I think you could, you were definitely gonna find some savings, but my concern is you're not gonna provide the same level of service to an employee that you can with somebody in-house.
Yeah.
And, well, you know, weigh those when you're thinking about it, too, but.
So, and, and then from an employee perspective, like, how many employees truly value?
Well, I mean, how many employee, I mean, I don't know that I've, and now, again, it's probably not fair, but like, how, how often do the employees interact with?
They interact with both myself and HR, um, at least, I can't say what departments, but at least once a week.
So I'm in only HR.
For that position, it's not, it's not full-time HR.
Right.
Right. There's other tasks, because, you know.
But the thing is.
We don't have, we don't need full-time HR.
Right, you're very correct, and if we're outsourcing payroll already, so like, here's, I just did a quick, like, okay, what should a town like Bristol try to budget to outsource HR? And it talks about HR benefits and compliance, uh, handbook or routine HR. Mid is like fifty grand. Is what the AI is saying right now, but, you know, I mean, as soon as AI could be, could you be full.
Yeah, but we're not, we're paying maybe sixty, if I think is in the budget.
So.
For seven.
Which is HR and welfare. I, I, well, it could be sixty-five.
Well, it's not your true employee cost, though.
Right, because that is, right, it is that, plus this is saying include payroll. I don't know, it may be, it may be worth a conversation with our payroll provider, because a lot of times they have the ability to do it.
Well, our payroll provider is doing payroll, but we still need an internal person to review it and submit the documents. There's, I, I, actually, I went to both Heather and Ruby, and they both said the same thing. You still need someone.
Yeah.
This one said.
Who's our payroll provider today?
Harper's.
Harper's.
Um, outsourced HR services, monthly retainers, small organizations up to fifty, which that's, wouldn't be us, but is a thousand to five thousand per month. Medium organizations, fifty-one to two fifty, where we would be, would be five thousand to twenty thousand per month.
Which wouldn't be worth it.
But that, and this is just, again, this is AI.
Yeah.
I ain't go get a quote from bamboo or anything yet, um, but it does say basic, you could do per employee, per month pricing, which is basic HR forty-five to a hundred and sixty dollars per employee per month. Comprehensive HR is two-ten to four-hundred per month. Comprehensive includes recruiting, training, and performance management.
And how much do we pay Harper's to do payroll?
Hang on, I'll tell you. We, right now, we're paying for software and payroll costs, but, um.
I mean, the whole point is, is, is there an economy of scale that we can get by trying to blend that?
We were paying payroll on twelve thousand dollars a year, but it's reduced now. Um, right now, um, I haven't got all the bills in, but right now it's about, um, eighty-five hundred, so we still have more of those.
Just for argument, just for argument's sake, call it, call it, uh, eight, right?
Yeah.
So if we take the fully burdened person, plus that, we're probably talking about eighty grand, that's in the budget today, thereabouts.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, that's a conversation that overserred, I can't resolve.
Well, you tell the cameras all the time. I, I think you just gotta try to get some more info.
So I'm not gonna have you approve the job description or post it, then?
Scott, Dawn.
Scott.
Dawn.
Sean, Dawn.
Um, it's a fine line. I, I get where, where you're going, um, but in the interim, we have we have stuff that needs to get done. I, I would.
She's gonna say per diem, but we've talked about that already to cover welfare, but.
Right, for welfare, right, right.
But she will answer questions.
I don't think it hurts us to advertise for the position.
Yeah. Because if we get a, we get a rock star candidate to rush through the door, that's gonna, you know, be the perfect.
And then in the meantime, maybe at least ask the payroll provider.
We have sixty-four thousand budgeted for the HR slash welfare combined.
I, I think, I think we should approve the, approve it posted.
I think we actually need to put a person in there. I, I mean, it's good to look in to see if we can save money, but this doesn't look like something that.
No.
We're gonna save money shopping it out.
If you told me we could get contracted HR services for twenty thousand dollars a year, then, yeah, alright. But there's, there's, you know, also a large value to having that actual person in there for the employees to be able to, you know.
Yeah.
Go to and have a.
Look, and we've talked about, put, this person, the HR person's, would do the wage scale and the studies. We talked, we haven't, we haven't pushed that yet, but we've talked about doing that.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Yeah, no, if we could get a person in there that's, that, that we can retain, and, you know, it's been unfortunate.
Sorry.
Unfortunately, it's been, like, for lack of a better term. I kind of, I don't wanna use that term, but.
It's been an unstable position.
Right, yeah, sure.
Ooh, that's a very good way for it. I, I mean, the only, the only, um, the extra upside, if we were able to come up with an agreement that made sense from our existing payroll provider or somebody else, and some of the pieces that we've talked about, the comparisons, if they have other municipalities as customers, all of that stuff becomes very easy for them to do, whereas a person that's dedicated here, then it becomes harder. But I can see the other side of the argument.
We need other things, other, rather than just helping employees with the benefits.
Mm-hmm.
There's a whole bunch of other stuff. We, we keep asking for payroll studies and all this other stuff.
Yep.
You're not gonna get that from a contract.
Yeah. Maybe.
For.
I mean, it depends, I don't, I, again, I'm, I'm, I don't know that I'm convinced, sort of, honestly, one way or the other.
Are you gonna get a contracted firm to be able to go out to health insurance companies to do the comparisons, because we're gonna have to start doing that, because the costs of health insurance.
Well, one thing you're definitely not gonna do is get a contractor company to give us shit.
That is absolutely.
They're not invested.
No, no, they're only, they're only invested in whatever the contract says.
Yeah.
If you, and then you don't do the right T's and C's, you will definitely pay the price.
And this, just did a quick search about HR providers. These firms specialize in local government HR needs. MRI, we've dealt with before, but they do policy audits, compliance, recruiting, training. That's all, that's all it says, highlights.
I wouldn't hire MRI, I would say absolutely had to.
Um, McInnes does tailored recruitment ongoing, each other's support, and culture alignment. But it doesn't, that's their highlights, but it's making, okay, well, how much do they do, because there still needs to be somebody here who can do some of that, then.
The thing is, here's the deal, like, I just went to Harper's website, so they have a whole thing around payroll and then HR service. They do, they primarily do payroll, HR, and tax services. So without reinventing the wheel, we could ask them to roughly, what would cost?
We're having some issues.
Oh.
Let's just.
Okay.
You're talking me out of it.
You were in the quarter session, you heard some of that. I just need an approved job description.
Alright, I, I make motion to approve the.
You talked me out of it.
I make motion to approve the updated Human Resource Officer job description. Second.
Okay, motion by Sean, second by Dawn, to approve the updated HR job description. Any further discussion? Good. All those in favor?
Alright, I.
I will just let you know, I will look into it still.
Opposed.
Of these cases.
Don't waste all our time.
No.
Definitely not.
I'm going to the supervisor.
Alright, the Cliff Notes of the TA report.
So the TA report is really rough. Um, TA info page is, uh, there's no TA report to look at, so you have to, if you wanna look in that folder. Somehow I closed my whole folders out. Shoot, select board. You could, you can go ahead and take a look in there and see if anything jumps out at you that you're.
Uh, all I see are discussion items.
Go to the info.
Yeah, yeah. Because discussion items also comes up twice, no?
Uh, just run it down. There is, um, the update on the shore, shore drag separate issues is in there. Um, you'll probably wanna take a look at the abatement letter, just so you familiarize yourself, because that's probably not gonna go over well. And then the twenty Summer Street report is just to, um, we had the lead test done during the demolition, just to be safe. There was no lead, so, but we still have to pay for it.
Good. So what's not gonna go over well on the shore drive thing?
I'm not sure drive the abatement.
What, um.
What is that?
Sorry. What, um, there was, there, is a new meter needed, is that?
There was a request to, um, abate a bill.
A water bill?
Because of pets.
Okay.
And I should have included that request in there, but this, and there was, this is the second time that's been requested, and we've been, they've been asked to do a, what's called a deduct meter, um, which helps also analyze and determine what their true.
Usage?
Yeah. And, um, and they haven't done, yeah.
Yeah.
So. Okay, I'm moving on, quick. Um, TA report discussion items. Open sesame.
Interesting facts.
What?
Interesting facts.
Yeah. I, I just, um, touched base on it. We did book, we were, we booked and confirmed nine-three. Um, total household participation for this year, I thought was interesting, one thousand six hundred and thirty-five households went to household houses ways. Hundred, a hundred and sixty-six more than last year.
Wow.
The total amount collected at the event, eighty-one thousand, three hundred and forty pounds. Um, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five more than last year. Um, ever so strange little request. Did you see that? Will you stop laughing?
Oh my god. It's just, it, the irony is so funny.
Well, it, so it came from, is it, is it?
Yes.
It's the lot across the street.
Yep, it's the.
Across the street from the one that we just had a result?
No, it is the lot we just saw.
That's what I thought.
Gave them permission to cut a few trees.
So if you're, I, if you're good with it, I can sign it, and they, they're gonna do what they said, which is, um.
Gotta take the wood.
Twenty-six rotten, rotten trees, thirteen birch stems.
Sorry.
And the trees are leaning toward the roadside wires and are wrapped with blue white, blue and white ribbon. They've offered to haul off the wood. Do you want them to do that?
Uh, unless the highway department wants it for the.
Just wanna deliver it across the street.
Well, how, the highway department will pick it up and burn it in the wood still.
Well, they could deliver it to the highway department, that would be great.
What's, uh, just, uh, what we're talking about.
Yeah. Which, right here is gonna get an even better.
Yeah, I know. Alright, I'll take care of that. Um, there are pictures of the bill, the baler building improvements, the roof, the roof was done, the pictures aren't so good about the roof, but um, building renovations are done, and then we've done the lighting under the baler and to make it better, and the electrical outlets in that baler area. You're welcome to look at the pictures. Blood drive, just a note, if the public American Red Cross is holding a blood drive at the Marion Center, seventeen West Shore Road. Did I send that to you to post?
Beautiful baler.
Um, Tuesday, December ninth, from twelve PM to four thirty PM. You do have to call to schedule an appointment, and, um, we posted it on the website if anybody's interested. Um, the DOT letter is in your folder that I sent to, up regarding the projects. Buzz reported the last meeting, gas it, don't ask me this, I'm sorry. Um, made direct money to Manchester project that may bump some of the projects on the tenure plan off. So he said it was really good that we sent this letter. Um, and he feels that that letter and the visit that Scott and him did will help keep us on the list. But if, I, that's the letter I sent. If you want to read it. Goodroom donation, I wanted to say thank you to Jeff Goodroom.
Absolutely.
Um, he, uh, Goodroom Electric installed conduit from the existing street pole to the new temporary pole by the new parking area. And then additional piping toward the corner of the church for future parking. It's supposed to be lights, not lots. Um, he donated the timber materials, it was about thirteen hundred dollars, and I just wanted to drop that out there. He also currently donated the, from the existing street light to the Christmas tree, so that he could plug the Christmas tree lights in. So he dug, um, we dug the pipe, we dug, he dug, and then they installed the conduit, I think. Oh.
You could tell Jeff without him, Santa would not have been able to do his job, just stuck in the switch.
We gotta fix the switch.
I will put that in Jeff's.
Switch would stay up.
Notice. I already talked to you about.
Alright, it's getting late, you're gonna, you're, you're, you're gonna lose control soon.
I need to announce to the public that the tax rate still has not been set. It is not the town's fault. Um, we're waiting for the school to file their paperwork. I will post something on the website. I do not have a timeframe yet. Um, they did file one of their main documents, but last we checked, which was yesterday, they had not filed their revenues yet, so. December employee appreciation, um, we're grateful, we're thankful for the years of continued service. Um, assessing and land use, we have Ashley Bureau, she's celebrating two years. Fire Department Jerry DeRozier, three years. Highway Department Steve Jones is thirty-seven years.
Wow.
Um, Police Department Chris Carter's eight years, Eli Schaffner, eight years, and then Water and Sewer Department Ben Samborn has been with us a year. Ten documents. Um, ten document, they did extend it.
That's good.
Um, I will have you sign this before you leave. There's a couple pages that need to be signed. Um, the new date is February twenty-second. The loan date says December fourth, but if you read down in the paragraph, it's, it does say it's an amendment. Because my concern when I read that was this was new, it is not new, and I need you to sign that. And then I also need you to sign the request for advance. Um, holiday scheduled events, I need judges, um, for Monday, December fifteenth, or at least one judge, um, who's willing to go around and look at all the buildings. Um, we're doing a door decorating competition, and we kind of challenged the departments. Because I also got a trophy, the, the old Santa trophy that we used to give out to businesses.
Yeah.
And I, um, so we, we set the winning, there's gonna be a winning door decorator period, but the winning department will get their name put on the plaque.
Is there a, uh, set of criteria, or is it just what I think looks cool?
Just, I think, um, well, it's up to you. I think it would say just what you think looks cool, and I'll have a list of who's participated.
When are you doing it, in the morning?
They have next week to decorate their doors, and then whoever's participating, and they have to register with me by tomorrow, and then.
This is strictly town.
Town, town buildings, yes. It's a fun event. I've got two depart, two people, I've got the chief of police participating. He's decorating his door.
He's just gonna use a cell phone.
Um, and then this building probably will have the majority, but I just need a judge. I want the neutral judge, so.
Yeah, it'll depend what time of day you want to.
Anytime on December fifteenth.
So we can do it early, do it eight AM.
Well, listen, listen.
Sounds like John wants to do it. No, I don't care. I'm just, I usually, I can't do it that day.
First day of Hanukkah.
Oh.
No, it is, it's first, it is the first day of Hanukkah.
Or I could do it, I'm just gonna forget.
I'll send you.
That too.
Whoever wants to do it, I'll just, John's gonna do it, how's that?
Whatever, whatever. If I do it, I just, I have to do it at like eight, because I have a ten o'clock and then the rest of the day.
We have some other little holiday things planned. Don't, um, I think I sent invitations, but if I didn't, I'll send them December nineteenth. We're doing holiday elections at the Public Safety Building from eleven AM to one PM. You're invited. Um, so we'll be at the Public Safety Building.
Okay.
Nobody else to bring anything, no potluck. Um, we had platters donated from Hannaford, and I'm cooking the rest.
Ooh, what day?
December nineteenth from eleven, at the Public Safety Building.
What day is that?
It's a Friday.
Sorry, wait.
Oh, look, I got, I was lunching close.
Did I, I was gonna say, did I send, I might have sent you an invite already, but, okay. Um, for the public, we will be posting at, but the town, the Barbara Moonway Town Office Buildings will be closed on December twenty-sixth. Um, we, we, we also close on December twenty-fifth for the holiday, and we, all the non-emergency departments close at noon on December twenty-fourth.
So it's my fault.
Call Rob.
Oh, wait, I gotta check the list. Um, Parson, former Parson, can we find it? Can we just think of what we want to call a former Parsons property? Because I want to stop calling it the former Parsons Church parking that way. Um, so.
Call it A-Law.
Law, A.
Yeah.
I, I have a name for it.
That was funny. I don't say it. In the, um, we'll have, um, so update, we've dug up the parking lot twi, we dug up the property twice. Um, the first time JP, we dug it up in the driveway before they paved, and we replaced the pipe. And when, um, I sent you his updates to let you know that we did that, and we thought there were roots through the tree, there, I mean, put roots through the pipe. My concern was, um, I didn't want anybody else digging up the roots because we want to save the tree. So Jeff's crew went out on Monday and dug it up again, and because the church had no sewer, and it was backing up into the building. So when we dug it up again, we found a broken pipe from the demolition.
From the demolition, okay.
So they replaced a three-foot piece, and then some, one of the people from Morrison Construction did come out, and they said they didn't see it, or they would have replaced it. When they, um, we did get the new bill, um, which is approximately what was quoted. Um, it's the sixty-five for the demo plus, um, a, a rate around ten.
For disposal.
For, no, for the additional parking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, the.
The additional parking and the additional paving that we had then.
Okay.
Um, so, what's his name? Victor. Victor has, um, has, um, found money in the paving lines that will help pay for that additional cost, um, so we're good there. Um, he, he said he, he felt it was a good, it was his hot patch or something in sidewalks that was for paving that he felt that was comfortable to pay for.
And because Jeff did the line.
Right.
So that is, the, the question is.
Do we go back to the contractor and have him pay for the materials and the time? Or, I don't know the cost right now, what it is.
For the repair? For the repair because of the damage to the line.
Yeah.
Just to see.
It's a minor miracle, that's all that happened there.
All right, so you let it go.
I got to watch the camera go up the line, that was really cool. Um, the other thing is I just got an email, the church. Uh, I got locked out somehow. I just got an email from the church raising concerns about how dark it is. Um, I, I haven't seen a quote, but I thought that Goodrum was supposed to put in a temporary light for us on that pole.
I think there was discussion about that, yeah.
So I can go back, but.
Is it darker than it used to be?
I was just about.
There was a light behind the church that we took out.
Yeah.
We had to take it out, it was hooked to Parsons building, and then went to the church.
Yeah.
So we had Ever Source come take it out, and we told them, we, we are going to take over the lighting in the future.
Yeah.
Um, but the, he did say, he says, um, I hate the bother you've been so good to us. Um, the pastor said it's pitch black when they leave the church at night. He said, we should add an exterior light, doesn't want anyone to get hurt stumbling in the dark. I didn't, I don't feel they should have to add a light on the church, because our intent is to do something in the future, but we were gonna add the temporary light on.
I thought we were talking about a temporary light.
I thought we were putting something on the pole.
Situation, yeah.
Yeah, I thought so too, so I'll reach out to Jeff and see what, if they've done anything yet.
So I guess two things. One, I think it's okay for us to add a light on the pole, I'll not argue on that point, but if they need increased lighting in particular, as they come out of the side of the church, or if they're walking around from the front, then they may want to consider having.
A light put on.
A light put on as well, right? Like, I think it's, it's probably a balance of both.
Right.
Because if you look at the parking lot now, one, there's a little more ambient light because the building is gone, and two, it's a smoother surface, where there is probably tripping houses, it's really.
Behind the building and the walkway are not smoother. It's only the new sections smoother.
For, like, I know they're, but for like, two hundred bucks, they can put a hundred and eighty dollars, whatever it is, they can put a solar powered camera light.
Would do better.
With a solar panel on the back of that, on the back of that thing, that would.
Yeah.
Light up the whole area when they, when they come out.
So we'll let them know we're doing the one on the pole, but they, they, they still want to do something. Um, and then in the future, we did talk about, we would put lighting similar to what's downtown, most likely.
Yeah.
In the future. Um, the other question that's come up is that, um, in our parking ordinance, that property is not included as one of the overnight downtown parking when there's a storm. We're having some issues that another, um, more than one rental property is telling their tenants to use that parking lot on storm nights and not theirs. They've, they've been full. All weekend it was full by a different property.
During?
During the storm, the weather on Sunday.
So you're saying a rental property that has parking?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's seven letter that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but, all right, so hold on, do they have enough parking for the size of the build, like, or are they?
One of them, definitely.
Oh, well, oh, because they're trying to get them so they can clear the snow on their lawn.
Yeah, they're, they're using this.
As a, as a way, yeah, yeah.
Um, so that, so do we, are we?
I was worried about the on-street parking down with the old microphones.
Two questions would be, are, we have to, we probably should sign it and say that the church uses up to twelve parking spaces on Sunday, that they can't fill the lot, they can't block them.
And though, like, like I said before, uh, or I said to you, those individual spots are gonna have to be marked. Yeah, somewhere the Masonic Hall.
No, yeah, no, no parking on X marked spots on Sunday between blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Where you will be towed. I don't see why it can't be used for a.
That's the question, do we want to add it?
For a snow, add it to the.
For our, yeah, snow.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
And then just sign it that they have to be out by eight in the morning, okay?
Yep.
Add to the parking ordinance.
And Sean, not that I disagree with you, but like, when you say it will be towed, who's gonna do the towing enforcement?
Police Department. They do now on snow.
Okay, aw, awesome, okay. Just, I'm just.
We ticketed it this last storm, um, it was the first storm, so we did ticket, however, um, there, the tickets are more like warnings.
Yeah.
Um, we did not tow. Um, there were, all, most, all but one were new vehicles.
Okay.
Um, so, new vehicles as in they weren't the same repeat offenders, is what I think, so. Um, and did I update you everything? Okay. I.
Slack board.
I have no idea, so that's it.
Sure.
Uh, don't have, I was just gonna say ironically that I had checked on the tree removal job, it all looks very good. It's gonna look different here in a little while. Uh, I, and I was gonna say also that I did notice a lot more use of that, um, including myself, and I noticed, uh, John parking there.
He put a really nice post too.
Yeah, he did, yeah. Uh, so use, the use of that additional parking area, so that's, that's been great. Um, I, I didn't make it down, but thank you to everyone who did the tree lighting and the, and Santa and the Festival of Trees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, we did go to the Festival of Trees, we got there a little bit before the lighting, but I was flabbergasted to look on Facebook later and see how many people went down there for the, for the tree lighting. It was, it was full town center.
I think, essentially, they thought there was a, a couple hundred at minimum, maybe a bit more.
Santa and Mrs. Claus were worn right out.
Yeah, I bet, I bet. And so just, just continues to be, you know, a, a, a really great, a really great thing for, for the town. And, um, happy to see, uh, everybody rallying around our new Christmas tree, uh, which I wasn't a fan of to begin with, but I think it's gonna be great.
It's, it's a little small now, but it'll grow.
No, no, I, I didn't, I, originally I didn't want a permanent tree, because I, I thought it took up, you know, as growth takes up too much of the, of the space there, but everyone seems to like the.
I think the.
The idea of the permanent Christmas tree.
I think that us, not us, I will say Janice has done an extremely good job in, um, putting posts out about the size of the tree.
Yeah.
And those are really.
It's a gorgeous tree, it's gonna be great. It's gonna be, it's gonna be fantastic.
Yeah, that's something we should maybe think about in the future, is to keep it trimmed.
Yeah, you gotta do a little bit, uh.
They, so it, the tree is covered for maintenance, et cetera, for three years.
For three years.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so just, again, just kudos to everyone involved, because that's, that's also, one of the things that really makes Bristol amazing, um, as a community.
Yep.
Um, we did shut down the Stark Town Hall this week. Um.
Yeah.
We shut it completely down. We will not reopen it, no events, so if anybody's interested in the Stark Town Hall.
Until spring.
Until April, most likely, because we don't have to open it much.
Yeah. Oh, that's right, yeah. All right, that's all I have. Okay, um, for me, I just, uh, probably the biggest thing on like economic development, Bruce.
I'll get back to it, sorry.
No, you're all good. But, uh, I really want to thank Bruce Dohrn in particular right now, because he's done, he continues to do a ton of research on housing and stuff like that. He keeps sharing different articles, um, around different things that are going on in the state. Uh, you know, so we're, we're, we're getting closer to getting that properly reconstituted and gone, so. That's it. I mean, other than that, echo what Sean said, that was, you know, you look at Halloween, all the things that were done, you know, with, with how we've given out candy and the witches and, and whatnot, and then you go to, to Christmas, and we do all the lighting stuff, and you just look at the number of people that are really coming together, it's, it, it, it shows where all the investments are, are paying off, and the community's doing work, so, hang on, there you go.
Um, Don.
I'm all.
So. One thing I, uh, you mentioned Halloween, and I kind of forgot to bring this up. Um, I think next year we really ought to look at shutting down school, Mayhew.
I talked to them about it.
About, did like a local, did I bring that up? I couldn't remember.
Yeah, you did.
Like a local traffic only.
They, um, I mentioned it, but, um, I'm trying to remember who was at the events committee meeting for a police officer, didn't agree. However, we can certainly reevaluate that. I can't remember the exact conversation, so I will have it reevaluated. We have time to figure that out.
Yeah, we have to agree, there's something to do.
Right.
Yeah.
I would echo what Sean said about tree lighting. Um, also the fire department helped their boot drive on Saturday, um, that went very well, so. Um, other than that, uh, Santa's Village is coming up next weekend at the community center. Uh, do you have any other town events going on this week?
This Saturday, the Masonic Hall is breakfast with.
Oh, breakfast with Santa, yeah, this is seven.
Uh.
Uh, eight to ten, I think.
I think the cookie buffet is going on too for the Mayanot Super Library.
They usually come, sorry, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, glad you said that, thank you.
But, uh, yeah, on, on that, that's all I got.
Kate, you? Anything for the public out there?
I will let you know that, um, a hydrant will, um, on Crescent Street, um, it, it's one of the older ones. It's out of service and will be for the winter. The fire department's been notified, but I just want you to know it will be for the winter.
Which one is that?
Of Crescent Street near Phineas.
No, oh, not the one at the corner of Lake?
No, Crescent, up higher, yeah. And then, um, we had three down after flushing. Um, they have one more to repair on Holiday Hills, but the one on Crescent Street is, is.
Is additional.
Is going to be a problem for repair, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Dawn to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes?